So, all in favor? All right, who carries forward a zero?
And then do we make that last announcement? Earlier in an open session, but where we didn't have everyone here, we moved to approved contract as presented for our Chief of Staff Clerk of Counsel. And on January 28th, we will be welcoming Kena Thomas to our staff.
Thank you.
And I have just one quick I would like to, for us to offer the Turner family moment of silence. Mr. Rick Turner, Dr. Turner, the former president of the NAACP, lost his wife last week. And the family is currently making plans for Mrs. Turner's service. And I would just like for us, for their dedication and commitment to the community, to just offer the family a moment of silence.
Thank you. Do we have any proclamations? Okay, all right. So is there anyone here who would like to speak of any other topics that are on the consent agenda? All right. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Just come on up.
Pardon me, Madam Mayor, I was, I am signed up to speak during public comment. I can wait till then. I wasn't sure if you want, if you meant the public to speak on the consent agenda.
Yes, it's the public. I was out of order for something else, but we'll get back to that.
No problem, I wanted to make sure I wasn't out of order. So thank you for the clarification. Good evening, Ms. Mayor and members of council. I'm Valerie Long, and our firm represents the owner of land on Rugby Avenue that I spoke to you about at your earlier meeting this month that is, that would be negatively impacted by the zoning text amendment that's identified as item N on the consent agenda and relates to dwelling unit designations. Our client is the applicant under the Board of Zoning Appeals decision from November 15th, and we would ask that you consider pulling this item from the consent agenda tonight so that you could consider a potential exemption for the property in question from the proposed amendment. We have no objections to that amendment. If it's the desire of council to adopt it, we just feel strongly that it would be equitable and reasonable under the circumstances and the extraordinary expenses and amount of time that our client has spent on its project to consider a very limited exemption so that it will benefit from the decision that the city's own Board of Zoning Appeals made in November. As I think I stated last, earlier this month, the city had a 30-day period and a legal right to appeal that decision to circuit court. And having not done so, that decision is final and non-appellable. So by moving forward with this zoning text amendment without an exemption, it would prohibit our client from benefiting from its legal right from that benefit of that decision, which it has relied on now for over 60 days. So I've been in communication with Mr. Blair about some suggested language. I'd be happy to discuss it further. I know there were some questions at the meeting in January about whether we'd filed a site plan or not. I think you may remember. Ms. Creasy confirmed that we had submitted one. If I could, Mr. Murphy, you had asked a very good question about how the Sigma Chi fraternity house on Preston Avenue was handled several years ago. I actually was involved in that application as well and can relay that in that application, density was not an issue because, again, fraternity houses are regulated by special use permit and not by density. It was not an issue whether it was a dwelling unit or not. It was a question of did they comply? Were they adding more beds than were already there or not? And with the Sigma Chi renovation project, they were not adding any additional beds. It was a question of intensity of use because it is a legal non-conforming use because it predates the zoning ordinance requirement for a special use permit. The property in question is in the same situation. It has existed long before the requirement for a special use permit existed. So it is a legal non-conforming use. This project is not proposing to increase the amount of beds on that parcel. Density is not an issue. Nevertheless, all we're asking for is a very limited exemption so that our client can benefit from that Board of Zoning Appeals decision. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the consent agenda?
Can you turn off that microphone? We can't hear the microphone.
Okay. You'll check that, thank you. All right.
Excuse me, is this the time for deposing?
I think it's after he, Brian reads.
Okay, sorry, sorry. That's right, thank you. I just had a brain blip.
You ready, please?
Yes. Do you want to read the consent agenda?
Consent agenda. Item A, minutes from January 7th, 2019, and January 11th, 2019. Item B, appropriation, Meadow Creek Trail Bridge Grant from VDOT, $375,000, second of two readings. Item C, appropriation, the 250 bypass Green Belt Trail Grant from VDOT, $500,000, second of two readings. Item D, appropriation, information technology funding for Office 365 licenses, $53,774, second of two readings. Item E, appropriation, grant for bicycle and pedestrian improvements at Monticello Avenue, Ridge Street, and Monticello Second Street, $547,730, first of two readings. Item F, appropriation, the housing opportunities for people with AIDS/HIV, $213,012, first of two readings. Item G, appropriation, employment for temporary aid to needy families, $66,623.53, first of two readings. Item H, a resolution, bridge ministry funding allocation, $17,400, first of one reading. Item I, a resolution, funding transfer for form-based code contract amendment, $42,553, first of one reading. Item J, an ordinance, release of stormwater detention facility easement in Seminole Square North Wing, second of two readings. Item K, an ordinance, underground utility easement to Dominion Energy at the Ragged Mountain Reservoir, second of two readings. Item L, ordinance, zoning text amendment to revise the definition of amusement centers and allowable zoning classifications, second of two readings. Item M, an ordinance, zoning text amendment for street designations in mixed-use zones, second of two readings. Item N, an ordinance, zoning text amendment modifying the definition of dwelling unit, second of two readings. And item O, an ordinance, approve amendments to the Charlotteville Albemarle Convention and Visitors Bureau Operating Agreement, first of two readings.
All right, is there a motion?
Mayor Walker, I would like to pull item N, the ZTA, the zoning text amendment modifying definition of dwelling unit.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any further questions or comments? All right. Please vote.
So, well, we're making a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda without, okay.
We need someone to make that.
That's what I thought, that there was a second motion. So I move we adopt the consent agenda minus item N, which will be discussed later in the agenda.
Second.
Please vote. All right, that carries forward a zero with item N being added on later in the agenda. All right, next we'll have the, Mr. Murphy's interim city manager's response to their previous community matters.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. Tonight, we do not have Ms. Carey here, but we'll reach.
She's watching.
Hi, Ms. Carey. And I'll certainly reach out to her directly. She asked some questions at our last meeting about the kind of pedestrian travel, particularly at the intersection of Ridge, McIntyre, Water, South Street. And I've talked with the traffic engineer about that, also about some lighting that's going to be going into a bus stop. And so I think that we have some answers, most notably just for the public. I would say that the plans for that area take away two of what they call slip lanes right now, one by the bus station and the other by the federal courthouse. And that is going to help to shorten some of these pathways for pedestrians. And I believe there was a question about lighting that's going to be helpful for getting folks from South Street to the bus stop at the west end of the mall, kind of below the federal courthouse, but before where the ice park is today, so. And again, if there's more specifics, I'll make a call to Ms. Carey to do that follow-up. I want to note that at the last meeting, Ms. Khan had requested a meeting with the police chief. It did happen three days after the meeting. And Mr. Bowers and some other folks from the CRB had talked about the need for raw data from the police department. And actually, we've just revisited that topic and had a meeting this afternoon. So I'm hopeful that we have some new requests that the CRB will entertain at their meeting tomorrow night and will have a little more clarity on what the city can provide. And we are bringing back to you tonight, of course, the dwelling unit CTA.
Okay, thank you. So next we have the first community matter section. And we start with Leah Wiong.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Walker and members of council. My name is Lee Wian.
Okay.
My alter ego is sometimes.
We got it straight.
Yes. I'm the Associate Director of the Bridgeline. You received a copy of these comments earlier today from our executive director. Over 8,200 adults live with brain injuries in the Thomas Jefferson Health District, and from these, over 1,100 live in Charlottesville alone. The Bridgeline is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization in Charlottesville and supports over 50 adults with brain injuries, the only organization providing these specific services in the city. Each adult falls into the low-income group and depends on SSI, SSDI, workers' compensation payments, and the support of their families. Community-based alternatives are a priority for institutional programs in mental health, intellectual disability, substance abuse, and aging. But people with brain injuries fall through all the cracks due to the lack of appropriate community-based services in our area. City of Charlottesville funding has supported two of our four programs over the past years and for which we are very grateful. The first is our residential program. This program fosters a family-like living arrangement where adults with brain injuries can live, to the greatest degree possible, as independent members of our general community. The second program is where I work, is at the Bridgeline Place. This program is a community-based vocational program that allows its members to learn valuable work and social skills to achieve their vocational and independent living goals. The current programmatic support provided by the City of Charlottesville ensures services to a vulnerable population that does not have access to any residential or community-based services supported by federal or state assistance because their disabilities fall outside the eligibility criteria for either developmental disability or chronic mental illness. The potential to lose 4% to 6% of our annual revenue for these programs provided by city funding would dramatically impact our organization and the people that rely on our high-quality services would ultimately suffer those consequences. We would not be able to staff these programs adequately and consequently have to deny or reduce services to people with brain injury in the City of Charlottesville. Thank you very much for the opportunity to make the comments.
Thank you, have a good evening. Ian McNett. Ian McNett. Heather Peck.
Good evening, councilors. First of all, I want to say to everyone who shows, who serves the, our city at these meetings every week, I'm very grateful. I know it's a marathon experience. And, and there but for the grace of God go I. I'm here to make a very firm stand for the work that, that's gone into Home-to-Hope Peer Navigators Funding. We all know that the number-one thing that supports wellness for people who have had challenges in life, and certainly for people who have had the challenge of justice system involvement, the number-one intervention that matters is employment. And for the city to commit yourself, heart and soul, and $405,000, and this program to actually be hosted under your leadership, sir, this is very, this is, this is making a statement that yes, we are going to go all in to achieve the goals of a healthy and safe city, of an inclusive community of self-sufficient residents. There's just something qualitatively more powerful for you all to have this hosted in the city and for you all, council members, to, to vote yes, fully fund all three components of this. Anyone who wants to stand up and join me in, in saying yes, we want people who have been involved with justice system involvement to have all of your city resources engaged in this project. And I just want to give honor to Kakhi Dimick and Holly Lee, who helped architect, architect this. And I know there's a second reading. I'm just cheering you all on. And if you've got any questions, my agency will be able to support this initiative to a limited degree because we have funding from the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, so we can support you guys. Your, your hopefully soon-to-be employees in this project, such that they can be fully trained in IPS-supported employment, the national evidence-based practice. The state's got that funding. Our agency will step forward 100% to, to help come, come alongside you to do that. Thank you very much for your time this evening. And I know that there are challenges in the nonprofit sector in Charlottesville today. I just wish that everyone would choose to go high and to courageously face the challenges with mutual respect. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mary Carey isn't here.
I apologize. My name is John Napsiger, and I'm afraid I.
Oh, oh. No, you can come on up, sorry about that. You wore a number. It's fine. Went right to Ian.
Well, Mayor Walker, Vice Mayor Hill, council members, thank you for your service, for your opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm John Napsiger, Executive Director of Jefferson Area CHIP, the Children's Health Improvement Program. On behalf of our Board of Directors and our Chair, Valerie Palamouton, I'd like to thank you for the strong investment that the city has shown for our community's children and families through funding for CHIP and other community agencies. We're extremely grateful for the priority that the city has put on early childhood services and want to make sure that the impact of these services is not lost during the evaluation of the ABRT funding process. CHIP's voluntary program focuses on child and family health, child development, and financial stability for families, partnering with parents during the most critical period of development for babies and young children. In January 2017, we began our neighborhood outreach project based in offices near downtown, working with community partners and providing increased outreach to families in the city. Last year, CHIP worked with 203 Charlottesville children from 129 partner families, an increase of 9% over the previous year. In just the first six months of FY19, we've worked with 175 children from 120 families, a 22% increase over the same period a year ago. So we're seeing a significant increase in demand for CHIP support from families in the city. As you may know, CHIP started with the city's support in 1991 as a service of the Health Department in partnership with MACA. We have been an independent agency and receive support through ABRT since 2008. And we partner closely with the Department of Social Services, as well as the schools and the city pre-K program to make sure all CHIP families can apply for preschool on time and get enrolled. City funding supports half of our Charlottesville families. The loss of it would affect the well-being of over 100 pregnant moms and families with babies and young children at the time they need support the most. After many years, the benefits of funding CHIP and other programs may become less visible, but they're very real. While I don't know all the details of the proposed new process, I ask you to please consider the potential unintended consequences of these changes. CHIP is a prevention program, and the city has seen great benefits from long-term prevention efforts in terms of school readiness and outcomes for youth. As nonprofits in a community, it's critically important that we listen to the families we partner with, that we get their input on services. As you complete your evaluation of the ABRT process, we ask that you be sure to continue to support the city's babies, young children, and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Morrison. Emily Morrison. Melinda Baumann.
Good evening. Good evening. Mayor Walker, councilors. I am Melinda Baumann. I live at 947 Locust Lane in Charlottesville. I serve as the Vice President on the Board of Directors of SARAH, the Sexual Assault Resource Agency. SARAH currently receives funding from the city to provide direct services and education in Charlottesville, as well as the surrounding counties. For the past 40 years, the SARAH mission has been to eliminate sexual violence and its impact by providing education, advocacy, and support to adults and children in every demographic. SARAH provides direct service to those who have experienced sexual violence in any context and at any time. We work with community partners such as Foothills Child Advocacy Center, Ready Kids, Victim Witness Assistance Programs, the Women's Initiative, and the Shelter for Help in Emergency. If the city decides to focus its funding on only specific funding areas, it will be to the detriment of many local nonprofit agencies and the people they serve. Any funding loss experienced by any area nonprofit will mean fewer services for the most vulnerable members of society. Further, there will be a ripple effect throughout the community. If SARAH's community partners lose funding, SARAH will suffer. Likewise, a funding loss for SARAH will negatively impact the community partners. We are interdependent. If the agency budget review team process needs revising, please have more transparency in setting the new decision-making framework. I also ask that you actively engage nonprofits and community members who may be impacted by any ABRT changes. Please carefully consider the implications of any new funding model that reduces funding for local nonprofits and therefore hurts the people they exist to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. And so I just want to comment quickly, since we have a lot of people here from the nonprofit world. This isn't the first time that this priority-setting initiative has been suggested. I have here a 2011 attempt by council and city staff to do this. And the same comments that we've heard in the emails and that we are hearing tonight about the impact on the nonprofit itself and then the ripple effect that it will have on the individuals that it serves. What I'm not hearing is how do you feel you could serve the community better? When I worked in nonprofit, and I'm the only sitting council member who has worked in nonprofit, I always worked from a place of working myself out of a position. If we have the current climate that we have in Charlottesville, where we are reevaluating every aspect, especially in situations where the city spends almost match dollars to the county, even though it's much smaller than the county, there are fewer people to serve, I would like for at least one nonprofit to have sent us an email to say, hey, these are some things that I could do differently. These are some ways that I could partner with community, the other community organizations differently. These are some ways that duplication of service could happen differently. This isn't the first time that it happens. And I think when you come from a standpoint of not just have you set a mission and do you think you're reaching it, but are your clients live showing that you're reaching your mission statement is the whole idea behind this. So this is not a pointing fingers or a blame. It's just how do we do this work best? And how do we do it better than we are currently doing? If we're talking about reform at every level and every system in our government, this is also one where we have to look, look at. There are millions of dollars that are spent each year. There are some localities where the city and taxpayer funds are not the primary source or not annually contributed to an organization. Charlottesville has set the scene where that has been the storyline for many years. And that's not necessarily the way it must be. So maybe it continues. You didn't get more information ahead of time because we weren't finished. There were calls from outside of the community for the group that has put, was put together, the ad hoc group, which is the most diverse group of any city committee that I have walked into ever, okay? And there are people on it who are not there attempting to figure out how to serve themselves. They are really trying to figure out how do we best do this work, understanding the value that the nonprofit world plays in this work. How do we do it better? So just for everyone else who comes up to speak, because there's a long list, I just want to say, since I'm the, you know, council member who initiated this change, we want to invest millions in programs and for nonprofits that are committed to change. Council could have received all the information and decided to keep it, as they did in 2011, the same. But we haven't received one email, and I did want to point that out, that talked about how things could look differently and how we could, you know, make this process a little better. And for me, that sends some red flags. I'm sure I'm the only member up here that it sends some red flags for, but I did want to share that. All right, Christine Nardi.
Thank you, Mayor Walker and councilors. My name is Christine Nardi. I'm the Executive Director of the Center for Nonprofit Excellence. We're a regional resource center based in Charlottesville. I am very happy to be up here speaking with you tonight, Mayor, in response to the comments that you just made. I think I can speak for the 15 nonprofit representatives that are here tonight, that the nonprofit sector as a whole would be very, very happy to engage in a dialogue around how to better serve the community. I think first and foremost, the opportunity to engage in dialogue, a full kind of community dialogue hasn't happened yet, and look forward to the opportunity to have that happen, to engage a broad group of stakeholders, not just nonprofit representatives, but also the clients that they serve. Secondly, I think one of the questions that has been raised by this process, and I think this is an important process, an important part of the process, to be able to flesh out some of the key questions and concerns to be able to resolve as the council moves forward. But one of the key questions that's been raised in our mind is what specifically is the goal of the, the reformation of the ABRT process? One of the challenges and the things that you've heard tonight with nonprofits coming in and speaking directly to the services that they provide, one of the challenges is that it's not entirely clear from the process so far what the specific. that it's not entirely clear from the process so far what the specific goal is of council in making these changes. One goal, and I think that's been articulated, is to be more strategic in the grant-making process, which is a very laudable goal. If you're moving towards that goal, what you're looking to do is marshal specific resources and work with nonprofits and other community stakeholders over a long period of time to achieve certain community objectives. Very important. A lot of grantmakers across the country, as you referenced, have been doing that and transitioning towards that. The challenge and the unanswered question, I think, and the reason that you're getting specific comments tonight is the question of what's to happen to the kind of ongoing critical community services that nonprofits partner with the community to provide? And if you're focusing on those ongoing critical nonprofit-provided community services, who are the stakeholders to engage? And what are the goals in continuing to provide that funding? And so, if there are two different goals for council, it would be helpful to better understand which of those goals is being focused on in terms of this process and what kind of stakeholder feedback you need in order to really best understand the impact of the changes that you're hoping to make. The final thing that I'll say is that really nonprofits have stood alongside of local government for a number of years in order to partner to provide critical community services and seek to continue to do that, to continue to be positive stakeholders in the discussion, to continue to give their feedback about the expertise that they have from the work that they've done, and to continue to provide critical community services in a way that works for everyone. So, really, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Valerie Long.
Hi, Elliot Harding of Charlottesville. I'm coming to speak on behalf and support of the Home for Hope grant that's being discussed later and to the mayor's comments a little earlier about looking to get the best out of any program, whether it be a nonprofit or a purely governmental program. I'm somebody, I've had immediate family members that have been incarcerated and re-entered in the past few years in Virginia, been an employer of a majority of the employees being reentry from federal and state systems. And a few comments that I would just ask that the city manager consider when looking to start this program is to consider that this is not a department where you'll have executive authority on these people's lives, right? You're not a probation officer, you're not an OAR. So, something you're going to have to do is build a relationship with these people before they reenter into the community. And so, I would ask that you work with ACRJ to get in early, maybe have somebody dedicated to a federal system, have somebody dedicated to the penitentiary system, and have somebody dedicated to working with families of the incarcerated, so that when people reenter, they have a bond already created so that they feel compelled to work with you. Otherwise, they're going to be making phone calls every day, and the people want to get from out, from under the government's thumb. They want to get out from under it. The most liberating thing is getting a letter in the mail saying you no longer have to deal with the government. And so, if you want to have a positive relationship with them and actually get it to work, get in there early, see what their job skills may be, see what things they might need early before they're out, and so you can get that ball rolling as fast as possible. And another thing is the community really is going to have to start promoting the employers of people who are reentering, because there's a huge stigma around people that are reentering into society. And we need to elevate the folks who are willing to take that risk and recognize the good in people and what they've been through and how they want to positively contribute. And then finally, I want to reiterate that when a family member is removed from an immediate family, when a family member is removed, everybody gets incarcerated. And so, when they go and they visit those jails or those prisons throughout the Commonwealth or whatever, and I know that the federal system's changing thankfully, so that hopefully these people are incarcerated closer, work with the spouses, work with the children, and provide some support there as well, because now you go to a single-income family, or a no-income family, or a grandma-income family, or something of that nature. And I would just ask that this program be fully funded, but also have specific goals of hopefully getting employment, because as the former speaker said, employment is the number-one way to provide something stable and hopeful and supportive for long-term growth. Thank you.
Mr. Harding? I had a question, I'm sorry. I'm just curious, because I hear you talk about the role that the city will play, and assuming that the funding amounts are all held constant, do you feel that we should be relying more on our community partners who have greater experience in doing this and have those relationships? Or do you, I mean, I also hear the argument that we really need to make a stand as a city, but I'm saying all resources, we're going to say we're going to commit the same amount of dollars, but we're actually going to partner with others in the area that do this every day?
I think it would definitely be worth seeing what they do now, seeing how successful those things are. And to the mayor's point earlier, how successful are those things? So, you might have community partners that are already there and a part of that process, but are they achieving what they hope to be achieving? And if not, what can they do better? And where can you step in to facilitate? I don't think they can get into the jails the same way the city can. Okay? And that's a big thing. Get in there early, work with Superintendent Coomer. I know that he's a good guy, and he would want to do this type of a thing. And letting the city get in early and say, what type of jobs are you looking for? What type of jobs are out there? Our community partners can't really build, can't pierce that veil the same way that I think the city could.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ellen Osborne. I live in the county, but I work in the city for literacy volunteers. I want to thank you for working on the ABRT project. We all know it can be improved. I have a question as to whether or not what you see as problems and what us as administrators see as problems and what our clients see as problems are all the same thing, because I think we all see different aspects of it. And if we work together, maybe we can get it straightened out. Over the years, we have begun to see ourselves as partners with the city in achieving your strategic goals. Some of the language I've heard lately doesn't, makes me believe that you don't see us as partners. But I want to tell you that we have bought into your strategic plan for the last couple of years, and we have been working on making our goals match your goals, making sure that we meet your criteria. And if you don't see us as partners, you're going to break our hearts. I also want to invite you to come, visit our agencies, stop in, unannounced is fine, literacy volunteers, any of us that are here today, we invite you to come in and see for yourself, get your own opinion. But thank you for working on this. We agree that there are problems, and we would like to make sure we're all working on the same problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Laura Allen. I believe I've met some of you before. Excuse me, I have a bit of a cold. I'm from Generation 180 and Seaville 100, but I'm here today as an individual resident who's very concerned about energy efficiency and the greenhouse gas implementation plan. I want to make sure that you all are aware of the overlap in these issues between the issues of housing and job security and availability, as well as affordability of housing. With energy efficiency, if a home is not efficient, the burden on that family is significantly higher. The cost of their utilities is significantly higher. Excuse me, the cost of utilities is included in HUD's assessment of whether or not a home is affordable. So, if the cost of utilities is extremely high, like I know all of you, it is January, my utility bills are very high. And I know that there are services out there to help the community to get help with increasing the efficiency of their homes, but not everybody is aware of that. It has been brought to my attention that there is a movement to get an outreach coordinator for LEAP. They do programs that help make it more affordable to have energy efficiency measures brought to your home. There are large segments of this community that are themselves not represented in that organization. I'd like to see somebody who lives in that community work for that organization and have a path forward and get trained to be an assessor themselves. I see this as an excellent opportunity for jobs. The gentleman that was here a little bit earlier, there's a lot of great opportunities in construction for home insulation improvements and solar installations, job training programs where it's on-the-job, not, you know, take off a work, get childcare, and go to school. I'm talking about on-the-job, get-paid-for-your-time training would be very meaningful to large segments of this community. And also, energy efficiency speaks to, I believe there was a gentleman here earlier, child healthcare, incidence of asthma, and performance in school can also be affected by poor HVAC systems. So, these things really do reach into every corner of our community, and it's very easy to say, oh, well, we don't want to set high standards for new buildings because we can't get them to build anyway. You have to set those standards in the beginning because it trickles down into every element. So, I wanted to just tie that all together, and thank you for being here. I wouldn't take your job, so I'm glad that you all have volunteered to do this. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening.
Evening. I'm Cliff Hall. I'm a Charlottesville resident, and I just want to throw another name in the hat for renaming of Preston Avenue. And I wanted to address the business side of it first. All of the businesses on Preston Avenue should first have a limited liability corporation tag. Secondly, they should file a 1099 EZ sole proprietorship to address the issue of overhead for the name change. The name that I suggest is Garwin DeBerry. Garwin DeBerry was a coach for 25 years at Charlottesville High School. Garwin DeBerry was also a graduate of Burley High School. He was a student at Lane High School, and they would not allow him to play football. So, he transferred to Burley. Now, in DeBerry's 25-year history of coaching, he had an effect on no less than 2,500 student athletes. So, for renaming Preston Avenue, I'm going to put the name Garwin DeBerry in that hat. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have any other individuals signed up, but we do have some slots, so if there's anyone who would like to speak.
Hello, my name is Darryl Jones. I'm an ex-offender. I represent a group called Believers and Achievers, and I just found out about the thing about the money, about the Superior Poor Group and stuff like that. And I think that would be a good add-in here, because we've been, I've been dealing with this since 2011, working with reentry and stuff like that. And it's a need for, it's a lot of stuff that I can say that's going on, but I've been getting a lot of questions. People come in and asking me about reentry. And I remember we had a proclamation or something saying in city council about reentry. And the only thing I want to know, when that proclamation was saying, it seemed like it was saying that we had a big glory moment then, and it seemed like it was put to the side. So, my question is, when the city council, in the city council before they put something in place and we get it voted on, then when they go, do y'all, is it forgot about? That's what I'm saying. There was a whole lot of promises made on reentry. When certain people's running, they not on council no more, they was here with us, and they made promises of speaking up and sticking up with us, and they haven't. I haven't seen nothing until now, what's going on now. So, I've been under a lot of pressure, parents coming to me, asking me about what can we do about helping people in reentry. It's just not about, like that person said earlier, when you get locked up, it's just not about me. It's about my parents, it's about the fact, and it's a lot going on. So, I think it's a time, I'm on it, I've been going to the reentry council meeting at the jail. So, this, but I think that is something, that's a group. I think that's a clique. I'd be the only ex-offenders in that group. So, by you putting something like this in place, it would probably be a better, getting more people like me that actually been there. What they got going on now with that reentry council, it's not one ex-offender on there, it's a bunch of agencies on there. So, it make me feel like, what am I, why am I here? Because you already sitting there making a plan for what you want to do, but not any of them have experienced it. So, I would gladly, from the information I got on this new thing about the peer support and stuff like that, I think it will be a better, it would be something good, and it would be actually having people that actually been there, instead of people that sit behind the office and got these half-paid, bigger jobs and making decisions for people like us. So, that's the point that I want to get across, and thank you for letting me share.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, we did have one name on the waiting list as well.
Do I have that?
It was Michael Payne.
Okay. Call him. Go ahead.
Will you still have?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Rebecca Quinn, 1044 St., here in the city, and I'm here to support your affirmative action to advance the lease for the Albemarle Charlottesville Historic Society. I think it's important to keep the historic society in this historic building. It's a public building and should continue to be accessible to the public, which would not happen if it was leased to a private entity. As you've heard, or I think will hear or see in the staff report, the historic society met the goals set by council, which is a pretty impressive accomplishment when you look at the list and where they were a year and a half or so ago. I'm also urging everyone in the city and the county to learn what the historic society has to offer. It's a changed organization. So much is happening, so many programs are free and accessible. I'm not going to spell out the webpage, everyone can find that, Facebook, figure out what it has, and join me. I've attended a number of them, and I hope more of you will do the same. And I'd like to add two things. I always come up with more listening to other speakers. About the speaker who talked about utilities, a really big part of energy efficiency is water conservation. You know, the city's done a lot with the toilet rebate, with the free faucets. We need to do more, we need to encourage all of our landlords, especially those who do have units in the more affordable range, to do their retrofits, low-flow faucets, low-toilets, and leak detection, to keep those utility bills down. And on reentry, I would say those of you who can, learn about the Fountain Fund and contribute where you can. It's a really important support, helping those who are in reentering. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Payne.
I again just want to speak about affordable housing. I just want to highlight for everyone in the community, I think something really exciting happened last week, the joint meeting between the Housing Advisory Committee and City Council. For the first time, we are working towards a comprehensive funding strategy for affordable housing, and I think we're nearing a point where the city needs to firmly make a commitment so we know whether the city is actually committed to committing the level of money that's needed to solve our affordable housing crisis, which according to the Housing Advisory Committee is about 1,200 new affordable units, and then about 3,000 additional units that will become affordable, not through new construction, but through other housing programs. And the estimated cost for that over 15 years is about $150 million, or $10 million a year, which might sound like a scary amount, but $10 million a year is something the city is perfectly capable of doing if it's willing to make that commitment. And I think there's a lot of anxiety in the community right now, because we're just not sure whether the city is fully going to be committed to that level of funding for affordable housing, even if it might require higher taxes for wealthier residents, or reorienting our priorities in the capital improvement projects budget, and making investments in city staff, and making investments across the board so our housing authority and city staff has the capacity to actually implement zoning reform. And again, I think we're reaching the point where we are going to find out whether the city's rhetorical commitments matches its fiscal commitments, and I hope the city is willing to make that commitment and think specifically about that number of $10 million a year, and think specifically about investing in city staff so we can actually do zoning reform, and whether our city council is going to have the political will to follow through on all of that. But again, I think we're at an exciting moment, and I just encourage the city council to not be afraid to rely on the Housing Advisory Committee, not be afraid to trust some of their expertise, and move forward with doing this, because I think we can do something unprecedented and really exciting.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No? No? Is there anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor Walker and council. My name is Martez Talbert. Recently, I just became a mentor under the toolage of Mr. Lorenzo Collins. Also, I'm a lone partner with the Fountain Fund. Also, I'm under Ready Kids with the Real Dads Program helping out. So I do a lot of different things, but mainly, I'm an ex-offender. It's not many of us that can come up here and say what I just said. It takes a lot of due diligence, hard work, I mean, a lot. I can, I can talk forever about this. But I'm here to encourage, support, and do whatever I can for the Hope, Home for Hope Peer Navigators. That money, hmm, is just a fraction of what you can do to the lives of individuals coming in and out of this system that we have in this country, but primarily here in Charlottesville. I work with individuals coming straight out of jails, prisons, federal, what have you, halfway houses, everything. And it seems like, it's crazy that it's a peer navigator, because I feel like that's what I do on my own time and my own dime, because I don't go to any organizations for money, help. I do everything on my own. Everything on my own. I got a friend of mine who's getting released this Thursday, been down four years, no skills, have nothing. He had a home plan, but they denied it. So now he's just been thrown into the streets of Charlottesville. He has nowhere to go, no education, but he called me, and I'm going to be there for him. And I'm going to be there as much as I can for him so he won't return back or do anything foolish. Just to say that, just to say this, with the Fountain Fund, I was the first partner, the very first partner, over two and a half years ago, and been with them ever since, doing fundraisers, getting people from the neighborhoods all over just to come in and meet with Mr. Brown or Mr. Yates, or even Mr. Heffey. And it's been working out fine. It's been going, I think as of today, I have literally get 11 guys their license back with the help of the Fountain Fund, just on my own, just on my own. And it's not something I'm up here to gloat, I mean, not to, not trying to get people to clap and then I have to, I wasn't even going to say nothing, because I didn't really think these type of settings do anything besides just what I'm doing right here, just running my mouth, because I'm about action. Because when I leave here, I'm going to a bowling alley, help other people out, and bring kids through, people through to have a good time, because that's what I'm about, helping everybody, not just ex-offenders, not just you, everybody. I've been through the system three times, still on probation to this day. And it's kind of funny, because my brochure with my face on it is at the probation officer right now, like in their front office for the Fountain Fund. So when people get out, they see me. They see that instant relationship to somebody they know from the neighborhood, because I'm from here, right here. So with this 400 and 5,000, I know to a lot of people that might seem like a lot, but it's about building that, with the young man said earlier, relationship before they get out. So when they get out, they got things set up in place. And like you was asking the gentleman about partnering up with everybody else and other people in the community, far as nonprofits and other agencies, they're willing to go. I've been talking to them, I've been dealing with them, they're willing to go. And I wasn't even going to come here until they're behind this Hope for Home initiative and peer navigator funding. So I'm here to just listen, take in what I can take in and report back. But I'm asking and encouraging, please, please, fund this to the last cent. It's very well needed in this community. I've been here for a while, and that second chance title doesn't, doesn't, doesn't even register in the community. It might have been something good for y'all, and like I said, people, I'm not here to get claps or any type of applause, but that, that statement is, I'm just going to say is false. Because once individuals get out, it's probation parole, District 9, and OER, and after that, that's it. And when I got out in '05, and then again in '09, I seen my probation officer twice. And I, and I knocking the probation system, because I'm pretty sure they got a array of issues they got to deal with, but I only seen my probation officer twice in a year. How can you build a relationship with somebody who just did three years? Show them opportunity, show them all of this, when you only meet them twice. That's not a relationship, that's a way to go right back or make bad decisions. And I'm not, I'm not here to preach to you, I'm not here to preach to anybody, I'm just here to state facts, because I'm out here in it. And like I said, I got a friend who's getting released Thursday, I got another one that's getting released in March, another one is getting released in May, another one's getting released in June, another one in September. And they all been calling me weekly, not just them, their family, their loved ones, just to help them out and get them some type of support. So I'm here to support this, and I hope you get behind this and support this fully. And if you need any type of help from me, contact me. I can leave my email, my number and everything else, because like I said, I'm, I'm just one person, but it, I'm like an octopus, I stretch out to a lot of different agencies and different people. So I'm just one man, but like I said, if this, if this gets passed and this gets funded, I'm going to be, I don't have to be one of the navigators, but I will definitely be involved with somebody. So I'm just here to say that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a couple of minutes and just thank the people who are working on the streets, grassroots up, coming for the Home to Hope. It's something that I think the city has needed for a long time. Second chance has been a joke. You know, I can't tell you how many times I've heard a young man say, if I can't get a job, or I can't find a place to stay, I'm going to go back to doing what I know how to do. And that just breaks my heart, because these are people that want in their mind to, to not go down that same road. They see, they see that there's a better, a different way to live their life. And we have put so many barriers on folks as a society that if Charlottesville is fully committed to Home to Hope and peer navigation, that's where it is, it's network, it's relationship, it's not from, you know, a bureaucrat down, it's from these gentlemen that have talked up. And that's how you reach back and you bring people forward, and that you are seriously, I mean, 400,000, hell, put half a million in it, put a million in it. You know, why, why stop? Make it really something to be proud of here in this city, and something that the next generation, because if you don't start it at the front end, you know, we're going to be dealing with it at the back end. And that's not where you want to be. You want to be forward-thinking. So thank you for doing Home to Hope, and thank you for the brave people that came and told the truth about what's going on.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? We have one more slot. All right, going to close the public comment section, and we'll have a quick break, and we'll come back to discuss the Home to Hope Peer Navigation Program. 7:45.
... twice in all.
Tried to, but it don't matter.
Oh, yeah, I pointed that.
Okay, you pointed that.
But that's good.
And that's wrong.
Oh.
Oh.
All right, I'll call this meeting back to order. Um, next up, we have the Home to Hope Peer Navigators Funding, um, first of two readings.
Good evening, I'm Kakidemic Acting Assistant City Manager. On November fourteenth, uh, City Council held a work session on second-class city, I mean, second-chance city, um, and, so sorry. Um, and, um, and the reentry, uh, efforts that have been, uh, taking place to date. We had a wide variety of presentations, but, uh, a strong emphasis on peer support and peer navigation that evening, uh, from a number of different agencies, um, with a number of different, um, uh, initiatives. Um, the, at the end of that work session, council requested that I come back to, uh, this, uh, group in January, um, with a proposal about how to expand to the community's capacity to provide peer navigation services. Um, and what is before you is such a proposal with three components, the first of which would be a GO peer support program, which would be, uh, designed to, uh, train, uh, ten to fifteen participants in, uh, providing, uh, effective peer support services, which would provide, um, workplace readiness skills, computer literacy skills, um, some, uh, skills of helping, like boundary-setting, those kinds of things. And then also a RAP facilitator credential, which is, stands for Wellness Recovery Action Planning, which is an evidence-based program for folks, um, in, uh, primarily with, uh, mild to moderate mental health issues, but also has been used effectively around housing issues and reentry issues in other locations. Um, and then also a first step towards getting, uh, certified in the Peer Support Specialist credential. Um, so there's a formal training that starts that process, and then there is, uh, uh, I think I might get the numbers wrong, five hundred hours of supervised, um, services, and then after that, you can sit for a state exam and become credentialed, uh, as a nationally certified peer support specialist. Um, and so we imagine that to be about a six-week program, um, and it would be really amazing if we could pull it off this year, because there's a, a grant that the Office of Economic Development has that would reimburse up to eighty-five percent of the cost per participant in that program. So the cost here is for the fully, fully-loaded cost, um, without the reimbursement, so it could be substantially less than, than the proposed thirty thousand dollars. The second component, uh, that we're proposing is to establish a Home to Hope Peer Navigation Unit, uh, which would be five full-time staff, um, who would be focused on providing peer support and peer navigation to folks returning home from jail or prison, with an emphasis on those folks who are returning home, who have returned home in the last twenty-four months, with a strong, uh, preference for those who are returning home in the last ninety days, which is, uh, when, what presents the highest risk for those folks returning to community. Uh, peer navigators, uh, would be focused on doing some practical things, like, uh, obtaining, um, ID, helping folks get connected to work, to social services, um, to, uh, pro-social environments, um, sources of informal support in their community, maybe working with families, as I heard a comment earlier. Um, and, um, we're proposing that this is a two-year pilot to really assess how to deliver these kinds of services, but also what the full scope of the need of this particular subpopulation is. Um, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars would pay for five full-time staff. Um, the third component would be, um, uh, flexible funding, about a hundred thousand dollars that would be used, actually not dedicated just to the peer support, the peer navigator unit that we've just, um, suggested or proposed, but actually for all the folks who are coming home into the community, who've come home within the last twenty-four months, who have practical needs. Um, we would propose that the peer support navigators, um, that would be supported by this project, and all other peer support navigators in the community would form essentially a panel that would then make the decision about how this money gets spent, uh, based on proposals or requests from individuals, um, who have returned home to the community.
And the peer navigator unit, the two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, is for the two-year pilot?
That's for one year.
For one year, that's the one to clarify.
I have a question. Um, so what would be an indicator of success for the navigator unit?
Uh, so the two primary indicators would be a reduction in probation violations for the folks who are getting services, and then a reduction in the number of days in jail. Um, so it's possible that we should also look at recidivism about rearrests, um, that gets a little bit more complicated, um, but certainly would be something we would be keeping track of. I'm not certain I would call that a source of success, um, right away, but long-term, we're certainly trying to prevent people from returning to jail by making sure that their, um, landing back in the community is as safe and, uh, supported as possible.
And, um, it is, you know, my hope that, um, we would let the, um, you know, the peer navigators, along with the individuals that they are serving, um, you know, define, like, what success is for, um, you know, individuals who are coming home or have been home. And also, even though these, um, you know, the twenty-four months, and if there are individuals outside of that, especially for, um, the flexible funding outside of that time period, and other, and even, you know, clients of other organizations who, um, need funding for something, I would hope that part of the discussion that they would be able to access, um, you know, access that funding stream also. It's hard to limit, and we had this, you know, discussion, but it's hard to limit, um, you know, this to individuals who, um, have only been out, you know, twenty-four months, when there are people who this program wasn't available to, who may need, you know, some service, but definitely know what the, you know, priority is, which is just based off of the, um, data, um, Neil Gutlow's data, um, about, you know, when you can affect change, you know, within what time period, but also wanting us to be flexible in understanding that individuals outside of those timeframes, um, may, you know, need service that the peer, the peer navigators can decide. And when looking at this and defining it, I think, you know, the traditional ways of defining, you know, success, we need to, you know, make sure that we don't try, fall into, in, into those traps, because it's, it'll be really up, um, to the individuals who will be hired for these positions to, um, build, to build the program.
And, and, and I, that's, that's certainly, um, valid point, and I just also have got a follow-up question, um, and it might be related to Holly, but, um, and given that there is a training component through the GO program, is there a possibility that, that the, that the, the reentry community that we serve could then actually kind of be even, I don't know if that word is favored status, but then primed and prepared to go into our other growing opportunity training programs? Because I know that in the past, there was always that challenge of not having the wraparound services you needed, needed for some of our more challenged, um, uh, recipients. And, um, and that was something that came out of the Growing Opportunity Report, that reentry is a huge barrier to, to, not necessarily getting a job, but sustaining one. So is there some kind of virtuous cycle that could be happening here, too, with this program?
I definitely see this as an opportunity to expand upon, um, individuals' opportunity to be in GO training programs. So, um, you know, uh, initially, we'll start with training the, having the training program for the individuals who have become peers, right? And then those people will be working with individuals who are, have been, um, you know, are back in our community now, and we want to place them into employment, and obviously they'll need the skills and training, so we would love to have them in GO programs. I mean, I see lots of opportunities. I'm currently, about seventy-five percent of individuals who are in our GO programs have, um, criminal history, some form of criminal history, and, um, that is about the same percentage, um, of the number of individuals we serve at the Downtown Job Center. So about seventy-five percent of the people who come through the Downtown Job Center have had some interactions with the criminal justice, um, system themselves. So I see that, um, it would be a perfect feeder into our GO programs.
Great, thank you.
Um, first, I just also want to thank you both. Um, obviously, we had this work session, it wasn't that long ago, and, you know, sometimes we come out and we say stuff, and then it's just like, oh, and hear it magically. So thank you for the work you put in, in a relatively short period of time to kind of respond, yes. And I, but I do want to ask, so I see the community engagement, that you, you've met with other service providers and community members, um, and folks among the reentry council, and pulling this together, and kind of going back to the question that I asked, I don't know if anyone, if you're watching, but, um, someone that came up and spoke, you know, this is kind of committing the city to being that employer, and what was their feedback on, on where this should fall? Because obviously, with the GO program, I see that's certainly something that we, we do often, and we've done for a number of areas, and, um, the flexible funds, you know, has, is covering a much broader scope, but recognizing that some service providers are largely doing this work, um, and are we really, do we really have the capacity? I don't mean that, sure, we can hire, but are we, are we going to be the best to serve this population if we're the ones overseeing it? And I'm just kind of curious, A, your perspective, as well as what you learned talking to others and through that community engagement process.
Um, so, uh, there were two methods that we sort of talked about with providers. Um, one is those folks who have taken the risks, uh, uh, associated with expanding their peer support programs on their own, with their own, sort of, on their own initiatives, either focusing on folks with mental health issues, or folks who are homeless, or, um, people who are coming home from jail or prison. And so there was a sense that the, that this, uh, Home to Hope program could actually increase the capacity of all the people who are already doing the work, like, increase a little bit here, and a little bit there, a little bit at the jail, a little bit at OAR, or a little bit at On Our Own, or a little bit at Partners for Mental Health. Um, and then the alternative would be to place in a community setting, in a, in a place where they're already doing peer support, like On Our Own, or someplace like that, or Partner for Mental Health, where peer support is a key tenet of what they're already providing. Um, and so I can certainly, uh, see benefits and merits to both. I do think, um, that historically, uh, I've been thinking about the city's role as being one that improves community capacity to deliver, as opposed to delivers ourselves, and so there's some tension there. Um, I've acknowledged that I'm a little bit of a control freak, so I like the idea of having some control over how this gets implemented, uh, and that, within the city, um, but I also worry about what happens five years from now, um, in terms of whether the unit gets truly institutionalized in the city or not. And, and the mayor and I had some conversation about that as well, about where it should live, and what the symbolic benefit of having it with the city is as well, so.
And... Can I ask, um, two questions? Um, first of all, I, I was, it was obviously the work session, I think there's a tremendous amount of work and thought that's gone into this, and staff, and in the elected officials here, and I think the stories that we heard are extremely powerful, and it is, this is Equity Lens-type programming, and I really appreciate that a lot. Um, and especially the, looking at best practices, and just a lot of the dynamics of the city. Um, so one question, just on this, that I have, is, is there, I, I just don't know the answer to this question, do you, is, is a dollar better put to use in a nonprofit than in the city, because of, you have to pay benefits, you have to pay that, that whole package on top? I don't, is it, is it less or more in a nonprofit? Is it, is it not one-size-fits-all? Like, because a city, when they, when they, that's one of the reasons sometimes we go with contractors or with contracts, is because you don't have to, you would just pay pure service, and you don't have to, you know, the city has the extra thirty percent or whatever because of benefits, but is that not, nonprofits are still going to have to pay benefits, because these are my employees. I just, could you talk a little bit about that, as, as a way of thinking about the impact of these dollars?
I think we would probably, if we contracted out, we would probably ask for the staff to be hired at a specific rate that would be consistent with the city's values, and so that, the pure wage dollar probably doesn't change much.
Okay.
But the cost of benefits certainly would. The city's cost of benefits, because of the size and the robustness of our package, is substantially different from any nonprofit.
And so to answer both of those questions, I think that's part of the value in it. What we're saying, and what we'll be able to say to other, um, you know, companies when we're having this conversation about, you know, hiring individuals who have, um, you know, past criminal histories, is that the city is making the commitment to, um, the city has an entire unit of individuals who, um, it's, um, supervised by, and the other employees are individuals who have, um, you know, criminal records in, you know, in their past, but that doesn't prevent, um, them from moving forward. And so if you're talking to other companies about the need to hire, and the benefit of that, us being able to say that we have made that commitment, I think will speak, um, volumes, and also, people deserve to have full, you know, benefit packages. So we had that conversation, um, too, so not just, um, you know, hired for a position, but hired, um, full benefits, able to, you know, start, um, you know, working on retirement. Some of, for, you know, some individuals, it'll probably be the first time that they will be, you know, having that conversation, and it's a conversation that we need to take to other, you know, companies and other large employers. And it's a conversation that we need to take to other, you know, companies and other large employers in, in the area. And I think us making that commitment is, you know, is going to speak volumes. So we got the email from On Our Own, and I actually, you know, called and had a conversation with Erin today because I got the email early enough, but, and just tried to explain, you know, it's not that we don't think that you could do a great job, you know, having the peer navigators house with you. I just think it tells a story that we need to tell in this, you know, area. And so not just employed by the city, but them being able to create the program once they, they are hired and tell us what is needed, you know, for a program like this to look like.
Thank you. I have one other question, this goes to Mr. Murphy also. So this is going to sound like awfully nitpicky. I just want to think about this, how it fits into the, as a precedent and with the budget cycle. So we established the Equity Fund out of the surplus last two years ago, or year and a half ago. And that, that's where a large part of this would come from. I just want to think about, and I would, I'm not, I'm going to support this, and this is just, I just want to address it because there could be a lot of mid-course program ideas that come up. So what we're doing here is we're, we're funding a really good equity-related program off the budget cycle. And we're making a decision ad hoc during the course of the year to spend $400,000 on a, on a really worthwhile program. I just, if we were to do that all the time, then we would, like, you know, if we were to have that be the logic with, say, a couple dozen really good ideas that were equity-driven that came up during, you know, in, in May, June, July, August, we would, we'd move away from the, the whole way that the government is set up. So I think we need a limiting principle here. My limiting principle is to say, we established an Equity Fund. This is a heavily equity-driven program. It's very important to, you know, presumably a majority of the council. But we, I, I want to raise that because we can't set a precedent where we, where we just start, you know, dozens of times a year, being like, let's fund this, let's look at this, let's look at this, because that's why we have a budget that's once a year, that's why we weigh things against one another. We don't establish Equity Funds ad hoc and put a million dollars here, a million dollars there. We, we do it all at once so that we can put everything together into the same budget. And it just would, we, we, we don't want to not do that unless we wanted to establish a different form of government. So I just wanted to, to see if there's a response, an agreement with that need for a limiting principle to talk about precedent.
And really also want to have something sustaining, because this is really, I'm really understanding, this is just for that first year.
Well, that's the other thing.
And so I don't want us to set up something that we can't ensure can continue as successful.
And it's framed as a pilot.
No, no, I agree.
So I, I think there's a couple of questions in there, I'll try and unpack it. You know, the council has been concerned in the past about mid-year asks, right? And had previously set standards at $10,000. Reconsidered that in this past year in order to be able to fund some projects that were a little bit bigger. And I think that preceded maybe an allocation to the Housing Authority for their rehab program where there are training residents. With regard to this particular ask, I think there's a number of different ways to go on it. And I, I, you know, focusing on the solutions would say, I would argue that you do one of two things. You either, you know, make the entire allocation out of the Equity Fund as requested in this agenda item, and then realize during the March budget process that maybe you want to reload in some way the dollars that are in the Equity Fund, so that you have the flexibility for future projects. Or the alternative is to say, look, you know, it's January, and if we get to work on writing position descriptions tomorrow, we're not going to have anybody on board till, you know, March 1st or April 1st. And so all we need to do is appropriate a quarter of this money, and, you know, city manager, put this into the 20 budget so that, you know, it is actually an operating cost. Either way, we need to think about in the 20 budget that there is some amount of operating cost. Either a quarter in the 20 budget that needs to get added in, right, or all of it. One of the two ways it has to be budgeted.
I, yeah, I would, that sounds like a good idea, that we would get it started from the Equity Fund, but then put it into the, into the budget, just for, just for parity with lots of other really important programs. And then it's like, because if we're reloading, then the Equity Fund becomes a council strategic priorities fund just a lot bigger. And then you have the, then you are setting the expectation that council on a frequent basis is going to deal with requests and hundreds of thousands of dollars in the Equity Fund. And that's, future councils are going to be working on that. It just, it just, it distributes that really important budget work over the whole year rather than having all these things in the same conversation, in the same, it just, it seems, but I, you know, it seems like we could have our cake and eat it too.
Just seems like that's, again, the reason why we have pilots. The pilot is to test out the program and the, the theory. And you monitor the practice. And then when you see how well it works, or not, but I have a feeling this will work well, we've been trying to get something like this off the ground for the last six years, then it becomes institutionalized. And then you decide that this is going to be a standing office of equity out of the city manager's office. And other cities have done an office of equity. Richmond is one of them. And there's, could be other elements rolled into that office of equity. But that's also a challenge and discussion for the future city manager. But I think right now, I think the pilot is a perfect vehicle for this.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, if it's the second option where we, you know, make a reinvestment into the Equity Fund and a larger investment. But this is something that we should have been making the investment into. So I think, you know, just funding a portion of this versus looking at the Equity Fund during the budget cycle, I think sets the wrong, you know, sends the wrong message. I think we need to make sure that people understand that we are, you know, committed, you know, committed to this. And that people get, you know, can wrap their heads around in the community that this is something that's coming, that's been voted on, full package, that we are committed, you know, to this pilot, and that we are committed to, you know, revisiting to see after individuals are hired what this, you know, what a robust program truly, truly looks like.
In terms of our timing, we imagine that we would try to seek to hire from within the pool of folks who attended the GO peer support program. So we would not start immediately with job descriptions or postings. We would start with the training. And so it, it is entirely conceivable that we would accomplish the training between now and June 30 to take advantage of the reimbursement money, but that we wouldn't be hiring until July 1 into the new fiscal year in any case. So, and however that affects the funding mechanism.
It looks like the $30,000 is to the council, is from council priority initiatives, not the Equity Fund.
Right, that was the recommendation.
With all due respect, I just want to, I want to respond to that point because I think it's an important one, which is that the, the idea that if we were to just, it would basically be an accounting mechanism, but it would be a decision where we'd say, we're doing this. Maybe there could be a contribution from the Equity Fund back into the budget, but then this would go into the regular budget. To say that things that are in the regular budget have less status than something that we would vote for here, I think makes, and, and it's something I've grappled with the last three years, is we do a tremendous amount of incredibly progressive programming within the regular budget. The GO programs are one of them, I mean, we, but because they're all together and you have many dozens of affordable housing program, they're all within the regular budget, it's hard for the public sometimes to know how much progressive stuff we're doing because it's hard, in the media, it's hard to get it reported on and get each. And so if we say the only way for a program to get the status is to have a separate vote on it in a separate council meeting, which is, which is one way of interpreting what I just heard, I don't, I'm worried about that. I think that we ought to have stuff, there ought to be dignity and value if it's in the regular budget. And we ought to have all this incredible programming we do be celebrated in those budget, in that budget process. So I just want to note that. I, again, I, if, if there's support to do it right now, but I want the stuff that goes into our regular budget to have a lot of impact and celebration because we do, there's, a lot of time it's, it's seen as glamorous and doesn't get a lot of attention.
Actually, though, if I may, this is, this is demonstrating to me, you know, it's taken us about five years, four years to build a robust Growing Opportunity program. And finally, it has reached maturity, and it has got a breadth and depth of understanding expertise with its staff that we've been investing in, to branch out into this new area that will then also expand our ability to connect the people with highest need to the job training programs that we have been trying so hard to populate and, and, and use to service the needs of the, of the, the most challenged of our community. So to me, this has been, this is like a missing link, really. And, 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 and I'm glad we haven't been waiting too long to find the missing link. So I, and again, I remember the, the, the reentry summit that was sponsored by former councillor Holly Edwards. So that goes six, seven years ago. Wasn't that?
2010, maybe?
Yeah, 10. Yeah. So that, that, these were some of the ideas from that, and we've been inching along. The Growing Opportunity Report itself was related to that effort. But this is really something tangible. And we had the, the re-bricking of the mall, which was kind of a piecemeal approach to hiring individuals coming out of prison and, and trying to get their feet on the ground. It wasn't something that we sustained. So I think this has got a lot more potential to become a real solid piece of our government programming. But it needs, it needs to start somehow.
I'm with it.
Okay, so we're just, yeah.
So it goes to consent.
Yep.
Yes.
All right. Any other fuller, further discussion?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, next we have the establishment of a priority-setting commission to inform council funding priorities. First of one reading.
At the last council meeting, the ABRT review work group submitted a recommendation to establish a priority-setting commission, which would then, I'm sorry, it's okay. Which would then establish, review prescribed, but not limited to, a prescribed set of data points in the community, and then identify specific priorities that would then inform how the agency budget review team money gets spent. During that conversation, council asked to revise the memo with additional information about where the work group was headed in terms of revision of the ABRT process itself, which would then be informed by the priority-setting commission. And then also to clarify some items in the resolution, and most particularly the composition, the proposed composition of the priority-setting commission. So the memo contains the four primary focuses that the ABRT work group had identified, that to split the, the funding pool into four specific pools. One would be a capacity-building grant, which would be used to improve organizational capacity and sustainability for nonprofits with annual operating budgets of less than $350,000 that address the city's strategic goals. In addition, the funds would be used for strategic planning, data collection, evaluation tools and associated activities, financial development and sustainability, or leadership development training. Those grants would be up to $10,000. The capacity-building grants were a recognition of the work group that there were a number of times in which council was asked at the end of the ABRT process to fund a nonprofit that was struggling and unable to pay for something that would make, otherwise make them eligible for the ABRT money in a more traditional way. Startup funds, to start a program critical to the city's priority areas. So these startup funds would only be used for those priority areas that were identified by a priority-setting commission. Eligibility would be for those nonprofits who are less than three years old. And they could have their own 501(c)(3) status, or they could be using fiscal agency from another nonprofit. That they would be used to develop programming that was specific to the city's priority funding areas only. And that those grants would be up to $10,000. Matching funds would, a pool of matching funds would be available, recognizing that a number of nonprofits seek support from the city as a demonstration of the city's approval or support of their overall activities in order to make themselves eligible for a larger state, federal, or private foundation grant. Those grants would be generally expected to be below $5,000, though the pool is intended to be flexible to match, particularly if a grant, a grant proposal or requirement seeks that you have to have 10% of your grant overall number or something like that that's matched by your local government. We wouldn't want to exclude those nonprofits from applying to the matching pool. And finally, the largest pool would be the programmatic support pool, which would be available for services that meaningfully address the identified funding priority areas. They'd be eligible for nonprofits, and that it would be available specifically for programmatic support. And we anticipate that the work group used the phrase enough money to actually make a difference. And so as opposed to being smaller grants of 10 to 30 or $40,000, these would be several hundred thousand dollars, and they would be focused on, solely on those funding priority areas identified by a priority-setting commission. The priority-setting commission's composition is proposed as two community members, two members with professional data analysis experience, including a background in economics or social science, public policy, or something similar. There was a lot of conversation at the work group about being able to understand and truly use data and data points to make decisions, and how important that was to both support the work group with training, but also have some expertise on that. Two members with experience in large quasi-governmental nonprofits like Region 10 or Jabba or something similar, two members with experience in mid-sized nonprofits, which is probably the vast majority, and two members with experience in grassroots nonprofits. There was a fair amount of conversation in the work group that grassroots nonprofits found it, found the ABRT process to be, one, with too many barriers and largely inaccessible. And so we want to make sure that the work group, that the priority-setting commission includes folks with that kind of experience. Two at-large members, which then could be a specific kind of request from council, should there be a specific need for a kind of expertise and later priority commission, priority-setting commissions, that council could more, to further dictate what those experience, those at-large members come with, and a council member.
Thank you. Questions?
So I think, at this point, we have this resolution in front of us. And I can honestly say that probably, this is probably, might be one of the top three topics that I've gotten outreach from the community, is not just the nonprofit community, but the clients they serve, as well as even talking to other members of the work group. And first and foremost, I just want to acknowledge and appreciate all the time and energy that's come from this work group and the effort that they've come to kind of set, you know, what I would consider kind of a foundational start to us getting there. But I, I think that we are at kind of a critical juncture in terms of, the work group has gotten us to this point. And I, and I'm, again, really appreciative of that time. But what is it going to take then to get us through to the end, or we have a process that is sustainable? And I, I think we're at a point where we certainly need to be engaging other stakeholders in the process. And I know that's been talked about with the work group. And so I think that is for both the process and how we finish the process, and making sure that we have council's broad support for that, as well as the, you know, how are we, how are we going to address the priority setting? And in what order are those things going to happen? I think there's still, even in my own mind, as a person who's even sat in on this, I'm still not clear on what is the perfect kind of step, you know, step function that we should take to get there. Because I think all of our goals is to get to a place where we can get behind a process that's going to really deliver on, in an impactful way on our, our community. And I think we all have that in mind. And so I'm just, I just wanted to, kind of just, as a person who's sat on this work group and just kind of seeing where we're at, and, and many of the voices that I've heard from, from a number, number of perspectives, just, I do, I do feel like we have to kind of rethink where we go from here to get to that end line. And I hope that there certainly are members of that work group that are part, want to be partners in that and continue that, that work. But it's clear that, even some of the feedback on just some things that we just need more input on to kind of get there. I just, I'm interested in us having a conversation around the next phase of this. Because there is certainly a phase that's here, and maybe it's not quite complete, or maybe it is complete. But I think that we have to recognize that a transition is going to take place in order for this process to really be able to, to get to the end.
I guess, so this is just open-ended comment. I guess, so this is just open-ended comment. I don't really have a question.
Or just discussion.
Just discussion. Again, thank you for this presenting us with almost like a working paper that begins to give the rest of us an idea of where the working group has been going and what they've been discussing. And so I'm very grateful to you, Ms. Dimick. And I'm very grateful to the mayor and the work group and vice mayor. I do feel, though, in the last four or five days, listening to the comments from the community, really digging into some of the history, the reviews and the revisions of the ABRT process has been going on for, you know, the last 30 years. So this is not anything new, revisiting the purpose and the function of the ABRT. But I'm not clear, reading this particular resolution, what the rationale and the charge of the commission will be. And because of that, I don't feel, at this juncture, that I could vote for this resolution as it's written. Again, I want to reiterate that I applaud the work group's efforts to build, to support and build capacity for new nonprofit groups so that they, we might have a better alignment with our strategic goals. I think that work is actually foundational. But that work that was in the staff memo is not embedded in the resolution. So if it's, they're out of sync a little bit, you got to make sure that that's a kernel of the job of the commission, I would think, that they would be building on the work of the work group. The resolution, as it's written, doesn't clarify whether or not the nonprofit groups that have been providing the vital services to residents in partnership with the city and the county for decades, that they will be continued funding. And that is where a lot of anxiety is coming from.
So can I just, because there is a lot of anxiety surrounding that. And even back to this 2011 report, which I think its foundation started in 2009. And it talks about that the, you know, the background. It says the Charles Almar Commission on Children and Families and its predecessor, the Charles Almar Commission on Youth, has managed the agency budget review since the 80s, along with the county. Over the years, the process has evolved most significantly with the move to an outcome measurement-based application in 2001 and an introduction of the objective point-based evaluation rubric in 2004. And then if you go through here, the same comments that we're hearing now tonight are the, some of the same comments that these student groups, along with steering committee members who were from, we have, you know, Child, Youth and Family Services Executive Director, someone, Jackie Bright. There's someone from the Charles Almar Visitors Bureau. OAR is here, Virginia Foundation of Humanities. The city, the ABRT city staff, two members, Ryan, both Ryan and Gretchen, someone from the Virginia Film Festival, a citizen member, JABA Festival, the photograph, United Way. We heard from John earlier, Abundant Life Boys and Girls Club, PHA, the University of Virginia professor, whose students did the research, Region 10. There was an Almar County member and staff member from the Free Clinic. And so even when this process that was, the initial members were agencies, nonprofit agencies onboard, there were still concerns about changing the funding process. And so what I would ask for us to look at is what are our ultimate goals? So we can continue funding the way we have funded. We can set up a board, and we can have the, some of the same individuals, because the names that are on this list are some of the same individuals who are here eight years, eight years later. But I think it's, you know, for me, looking at this, and being someone who's worked for several nonprofits in the area, if we are thinking about reform in all areas, and it's not just about taking anything away, it's what does true partnership look like with the community? And part of the discussions that have been happening in the work group are about how to make the individuals that are served the priority-focused. Not saying that nonprofits, because I've been reading the same emails that you've been reading, don't think that that is the focus. But how to truly make sure that there's a chance for the dollars that you allocate every year are having the most impact. And that's what this hopefully is about. And even if you change the way funding is allocated, being able to, you know, foster organizations, to be able to foster, you know, partnerships, and show, and be able to show the impact that they're having on the community. I don't think that that is, you know, just out of the bounds of like what we, what we should ask for.
And if, I can just kind of continue my thought, if I may. Thank you very much. Because, yeah, we all know that change is something that your first reaction is to push back against. I think right now, we're trying to come up with a process that is more open and transparent. And I do want to suggest that this might be a good point in time where we do shift gears, and in order to make the whole council part of this process, we create the commission. But that commission then uses the work of the work group as its foundation. But it expands its mission, and it begins to be kind of the, both, and that's what needs to be articulated. Is it only setting priorities, but is it then moving into creating the new review structure? Is it then getting into, how do you evaluate impacts? Does it get into other elements that ultimately needs to be part of what the work of a commission would be? And so I have some fundamental questions. It's clear that the council will appoint this commission, but is the work group going to be in parallel or continuing with it? I would hope that we have one commission. And maybe members of the work group could become part of that commission. But at this point, the whole council then would be involved with appointing that commission. And I think, at that point, it's important to be aware of it. And I just, Ryan Davidson gave us the information recently that this is about 1.2% of the operating budget. It's about $2 to $3 million worth of public money. It's important that the whole council weigh in on who's on the commission. So I think that, and that's not clear in the resolution as written, whether the commission is in parallel, is it ad hoc, is it standing? Has the commission got one deliverable? And that's a report to us on how to actually change the whole process, using the new criteria as a fundamental core. But then having a much more fuller engagement process with the entire community and the stakeholders. So all of that is not, it's not clear to me in the way this current resolution is written. And I was hoping that tonight, what we could do is ask this to come back in a month, and we give direction to Ms. Dimick through our questions. What do we want that resolution to answer? And I think all of us are in agreement. We want to pursue the, an evaluation and revision to the process. But we want it to be open, transparent, and inclusive of both stakeholders, as well as people that are benefiting from the program. So that's, that, I'm just saying right now, I couldn't, I couldn't vote on this resolution as it's written. And I would like to be able to.
And I just feel as a work group, we're kind of at a point where I'm just trying to understand how far this specific group wants to go beyond where we are today.
So I think, so because this is so important, we just need to get this done. Again, as I said, you're in the work group. Kaki's in the work group. Ryan, another staff member. The issues that are coming up with how this work group is selected, was selected, is because that I am at the foundation of that.
I don't agree with that.
That's fine. But that's, that's the issue. That's not important. I mean, again, I will say for the last time that it's the most diverse committee that any of us enter. Would you disagree? No, would you disagree?
I don't disagree, but I would say that I don't feel like my voice has been able to be heard. In that group, at times.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
May I comment? So I want to, I guess, add a couple of questions to this. The, and just a couple of responses. So the prior statements about none of us on council having nonprofit experience or having worked for nonprofits, it's not true. I've worked for nonprofits. And I chaired the Emergency Food Bank, which became the Emergency Food Network here in Charlottesville for three years, which is a $300,000 annual budget, which doesn't get city funds, but it's part of, it's in the CNE universe. And I also want, my major question here is, I don't know what the impetus is. There's a lot of general statements about an impetus or reason. And I heard, what I heard before in the mayor's discussion, I really disagreed with, this idea that nonprofits should come to us ad hoc and prove their worth now, and should be communicating with us. That's what the ABRT process already does. Because you have to file an application every year and show, and be interviewed, and meet metrics, and be examined pretty rigorously. And I remember, in neon lights, when we made the decision to take out the municipal bands funding, because they ranked very low. The African-American Teaching Fellows was, didn't receive funding. That it's, we've been through this, and we have an existing process. So I still don't know what the actual problem is. I've heard abstractions, but I don't, I don't know. And I know that the county, when they were approached about this, said, "No, we're not interested." And that's a whole other problem here. So to me, if there's a discussion about reform, which is a perfectly fine thing to have, we have the honest, real discussion about what are we? And I would want a majority of councils to subscribe with what the reasons for reform are. And I didn't agree with that one that I just heard there. I think that we have a process now where we force, I understand the need for strategy, for a more selective strategy. We want three things rather than 15. But I don't know if that's right either. Because when we do 15, we have a very, dozens of partners who work with us on a whole range of things, including the arts, and including all kinds of other priorities. So if we need to change it, I think we need to have a real discussion with the stakeholders. That would be a work session, which would, what I would propose is we sit down and we, we work with, we chew it over for a couple of hours. And we have all of the real problems brought to us, and we really have an honest discussion about them. And we see, is there a majority of council who really is like, "Yes, set this boat on sail." I don't, I haven't heard that problem yet. And so I'm not, I can't like subscribe to general reform without knowing exactly what it is that we're, so that's where I am on this. I think a work session, we, you see how much product came out of the work session on peer-to-peer, like we just voted something forward because we got all of the stakeholders on the same page, and it was extremely well-prepared. And you guys came to us with, it was like very useful, and it led to, a couple of months later, real action.
So I just have a couple, just to, how did you?
Go ahead. No, it's fine. I promise you.
Okay. So just in general, to the question of, should the system be studied again, right? I feel like it's clear that council has had questions over the many years that I've served the ABRT about some of the outcomes. And in fact, the realignment that happened several years ago maybe didn't always enjoy the full support of council because it prescribed some reductions that folks didn't always want to then uphold in the system. So I do think that that group, which had nonprofits, had in mind that there needed to be a realignment over time. That said, I think there is staff.
Even in that, I don't, those words, "realignment", I don't know what that means. What are the specific issues that prior councils had? I don't, I don't know. I literally.
Sure. And so the, I would say the previous council would say, you know, when somebody comes to us and they have a score, we don't know how defensible that is, right? Nonprofits would say, you know, "I'm not sure why we got a three or, instead of a four on this matrix." Staff would say, me principally among them, "If we're going to be about outcome measurement, then we should prescribe what are the needles we're trying to move as a city, and those are the things that people should respond to." And I think in some ways, this group is looking at some of those same issues. We have often said in the sheet that qualifies people, before you can even apply, "Have you been in existence for two years?" That's been a common complaint, like, "How do you get good ideas started? How do you seed ideas?" So I think there's an effort by this group to address many of those things. Now, whether they're all the right things, I don't know that we know that yet. The next step, to me, is for us as a city, and you all to endorse, that we need to decide, what are your funding priorities from this sector? And that really is independent of, in my way of thinking, what you think of the work product of the group that the mayor and vice mayor have been a part of. Because the next step is you to say, "What, what should we measure? And if we do that, then, there is a step beyond that where somebody addresses some of the things that Ms. Galvin talked about, which is, okay, let's do a crosswalk now. We said these are things we want to measure. There was a recommendation from a group about a new process idea. What would the impact of that be on our current funding? Does that make sense to us?" Because at the end of the day, even the work that this group has done won't tell us yet what the tool is and the application process. And if council and the community don't have confidence in that, all you will have is the same issues that we've always had, which is people lobbying that we didn't get it right. So the most important thing, at the end of the day, is to have a process and an instrument for assessing whatever those impacts are that everybody has confidence in. And that reform, I think, has been clear to council and ABRT members, staff members, and the nonprofits for a long time. So I think what you're being asked to do tonight may or may, you know, may need some more clarification, nor satisfy Ms. Galvin. Because I think when you start a group, it's really important to have the right charge. I think you've had enough commissions and, you know, work groups that you know that. And so if more detail is needed, we can do that in February. But there's no doubt in my mind that you need to keep looking at ABRT, and that you should look at what the priorities are next. I think that you're at a stage where you're going to need to seriously contemplate that you're not going to get this done by a May-June timeframe and impact the next cycle of funding. And so instead of holding agencies harmless for one year, you would need to be open to the idea that you're going to do it for two. Because it's an important enough decision for the council and the community that you should be taking the time that's necessary.
And I think we, I mean, there's broad support for this, the foundation that has been set here to be what, kind of, is what's built upon. But I know, I'm very interested in hearing from the broader community on the work that's been done, because I think there's just certain limits to what a few, you know, a smaller group in the room can handle. Some tactical questions kind of came our way of, "How did you come up with one of these, you know, these parameters?" And there was some real examples as to why that wasn't going to work. That's just where I think we've kind of hit our limit as a group together. But again, I would want to encourage that anyone who wants to continue on this journey. But I do feel that we're at a point where we're taking that next step, and a broader community engagement exercise is needed for us to understand the feedback coming from, not just providers, but from people who are receiving those services and the broader community.
So.
I have a question.
Can I?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, you just got here, so I'll wait.
I have a question. So do we feel, or do my colleagues on council feel that the report from 2011, if we are to continue studying this, that... to continue studying this, that however we decide to continue studying, because it seems like that's what I'm hearing you all want, are we going to, or continue looking at this in some capacity? Are we gonna bring back, is it gonna yield different results? Because there was, I mean, we've already reviewed.
I don't even know if we're continuing to study. This isn't done yet. I mean, this is, I mean, I don't think anyone will agree this is a final process that's been developed. We're kind of at a, at midpoint, and we're trying to determine how do we get to the finish line most effectively? It's not that we're saying more studying. I mean, I think we need more feedback.
I think, can I?
Feedback, study, sorry.
Yeah. So I think at this point, if I can make a recommendation, maybe it'll come out as a recommendation, but, so what I thought would happen moving forward was, would be that the work group, the commission would do its work to, you know, look at potential priorities. We would have those two groups and, in like a work session type format with council, would come together and discuss both pieces of this. At the same time, even in here, the data sources that we're looking at, they've always been questioned. So I don't think that the part of the question, you know, a question that I would have tonight is a comprehensive need assessment that keeps coming up. The cost of that keeps coming up. Do we know what the cost of that is and why we haven't been able to, to do one? And like having it on a scheduled basis, it looks like at least every four years, is what has been recommended in, in the past, to know not only where priorities might best align in the community, but whether impacts are being made with the work that organizations are, you know, are doing. So those type of conversations, I think if we had a work session, that's when they would come up. The feedback that we received from the nonprofits, and I'm not in any way asking for nonprofits to have, to prove their worth. What I am saying is that you, the same thing that hopefully we're doing to Home to Hope, that the individuals who are most impacted are the individuals telling us whether what organizations are saying is actually being done, versus organizations being able to drive that. And that's a different way of looking at any service that, that's happening, whether, and there'll be people who won't always be happy with the service. I've had that as a direct service, you know, being in direct service. But hopefully, when we do this work, we know that it's not about us. And so if we can switch from, you know, this kind of fear-based, if something changed, to are we doing what's in the best interest of the community members that we serve and that they are the driving force behind whether we are doing the work that should be done? And if things need to be tweaked at all, that their voices are, are listened, you know, are heard, and that we, that we make the changes. So it's not, I'm in no way asking nonprofits to come before us and, and prove anything, anything to us. So I think if those, the work of those groups merged, and it would be possible for us to have a work session then, and I mean, this is, you know, hearing Counselor Hill say she's in the group and she doesn't feel heard, then maybe this is a time where we do appoint, we, council as a whole, we appoint this commission and charge this commissions, maybe we look at the membership again, charge the commission with the dual task of doing the priority setting and the, the, the process for, that the work group was originally done. I'm not opposed to that. I'm not opposed to anyone joining. I just think that this is something that's really needed in the community and however we, we make it happen, as long as, you know, we have a commitment to, to that.
What were your thoughts about the timeline that Mr. Murphy raised?
No, I understand that we are in a. But I do, and I do want to have a conversation about, because again, it's, we didn't hear from the nonprofit community when we decided to freeze the funding, because funding continues as usual, right? So they're, you know, this, we just learned about this two weeks ago, that's not.
But I will say, that's my, one of my bigger concerns with this, though, is because I think a lot of people feel like they've been left out of even knowing what's being discussed in this process, because it took the form. And I'm not saying, I think we got a lot of good work done, because we were able to be nimble and just to have real conversations about this, and that led to this output. At the same time, it's, it's, it's hard for me as a person who's been in many of the conversations, to put myself through the perspective of someone who's been in none of them. And even when I looked at our own colleagues' last council meeting, and I was like, I can see why they're kind of like, wait, what are you talking about? Because a lot of people haven't even had any insight. There's been no like posting of any minutes around the things that we're talking about. So it's been all brand-new for the community. And so I think it's just important for us to, to open this up and inform the public. I think that's what's caused all the delay in responses, that people didn't even realize this was going on, because it wasn't public.
Yeah, but what, but what I'm saying is that people did realize this was going on, because they knew that they didn't have to apply for an application process this year like they normally had. But in that case, it was a very comfortable process for them, because they did not potentially lose anything. Their funding stayed the same. So I would ask that we look at that, going into, you know, freezing funding for another year, and just, anything that I'm doing is just to hopefully do what's in the best interest over all of the people that we are charged with the task of serving. Whatever that needs to look like for all five of you to be on board, or three votes to be on board, you tell me. And as long as we get to the point of where we are outcome-based, that we are aligned strategically with what our, we say our goals are, and that we're looking at this in a holistic way with some of the other major investments that we're making, and, you know, housing with schools and aligning to make sure that we can make the biggest impact possible, whatever that looks like, you all let me know. And.
So Mayor Walker, if I might, and I really appreciate your, your willingness to create kind of this synthesis, to synthesize everything that you've heard. And again, I think it's really important, though, that we do record and document and vote on something that we all can see. And so if we can have a little bit more time to get something before us that we all, three of us can at least agree on, I would appreciate, you know, I don't know if that's the next meeting in February or the second meeting in February, but I do like the idea of combining the commission with the work group, have it be one. And in this new resolution, that it would clearly identify what, what the specific problems are that we're looking into and, and, and what the solution is that's being proposed. And that sounds like the commission. And what's the nature of that commission? Is it ad hoc? Is it standing? We've finally got agreement that it's gonna, it's gonna take the work group, it's gonna absorb, absorb the work group. But is it ad hoc or standing? That's something maybe we can debate later on. What's the charge of the commission? Is it to establish funding priorities, evaluation criteria, a new administrative review structure, incorporate the findings and recommendations of the work group? Those are four key findings. And then evaluate impacts. I feel we need to have, and that's where you bring in expertise. What are the deliverables to coun, council and when? What's a realistic timeline for this group? How will the commission meet its charge and with what external and internal support? How and when will the commission engage the community, stakeholders and the city at large? What skills and perspectives do we want on the commission? We've got a list that we started, but what, what do those embody? And then what needs to happen to encourage the county to participate? I really feel that this would be a major break to, to go backwards away from regionalism if we don't try to always engage the county in this process. They've been involved with since 1981. And then how and when will this commission end? Or will it ever? So those are some fundamental questions that the resolution should answer for us.
So I, I would propose that instead of coming back to council in a month, that we just set a work session for.
And Madam Mayor, I have a brainstorm on the heels of that, which might be simplifying, but it's, it's just off the cuff, which is, that made my head hurt, thinking about how commissions, the complexities in them. We, it, it could be, I haven't talked to Mr. Murphy about this, but some councils would just direct their city manager to produce advice to them, given all that's been heard. He can appoint an advisory board, he could rely on the ones that exist, but Mr. Murphy knows a lot about this area, as we just saw. He, and he, because the problem with this is that it takes, they're foible, not, it's not a problem, but it's, it's, it's just an issue in setting it up carefully. You've seen this with the different commissions we've set up, that you're creating a formal government entity, and it does create time, and it does create staffing, does create lead time and all these.
Absolutely.
Complexities. It could just be that we direct Mr. Murphy to come back to us after a work session with advice to us, if he has the bandwidth, and it's, and he could, he could produce a, and then we could, we could nibble away and nip and tuck that. But as, that, that sounded like five months of work to me. I mean, because that, like the Blue Ribbon Commission was like that, the, you know, lots of things.
They have the bones of it in the resolution that's been put before us. This was just clarifying what its charge would be and whether it's parallel to the work group or includes the work group. And that wasn't clarified in the, so, but I, your, your, your option's also well-taken, too. I don't know, Mr. Murphy is pondering.
And I don't, I don't think that based on the community feedback that we, you know, received, I don't think that just placing this, especially in an interim city manager's seat, you know, lap, is the best direction for this to take. I think that we need to, everyone needs to be involved, since that is what the ask has been, and that we make the commitment to get all the information together at the same time to make the best decision for the city possible, with staff and all of council and any other community members that would like to be involved.
I would just suggest, if, if we did do a work session in the next month or so, whatever, that was high, that was well-done and just as good as the, because we've had some that have not been that good, but like the, the.
Second chance.
The one that led to Second Chance was excellent, highly impactful, and here we are. Like, so it could be, I just, because I think that where we're headed is that this definitely gets kicked another year. And your interests and our, is, is in at least, if reform is merited, is in doing it, you know, more quickly rather than have to wait another budget cycle. But, and the only way to probably do that, after we have the discussion, would be to have the city manager just efficiently do it. But, but I hear your concerns, definitely. I just want to, it could be that after, if we have a good work session, we could say, okay, all this has been discussed, here's where we came out, we heard from all these people, here's the different issues, here's what we really think we can tackle, this part, this part. I mean, what Mr. Murphy raised was different from what I'd heard, is that there's a lot of quality and administrability and transparency concerns, a metric, that, that it's, that it's kind of hard to understand what's going on. That's different from the strategic impact, people being heard, which is also very important, but those are, we could tackle different problems with good reform, and we could do it more quickly, but if it, it just could take another year.
And I guess I'm not sure what the problem with another year is, if we're gonna do it right.
That's true.
So what are the next steps?
So it's clear we don't have three votes for this, so let's move that out of the way. So number one, so I think if we schedule a work session, we can work on what that looks like and try to just schedule.
And I think that, I thought, I hope is that we all were help collaborate with, with staff to get there, because we all obviously have our opinions about this. And so I think the more we can kind of help partner with staff and, and the existing work group to kind of get that to a place where that can be the most effective use of time, I'm committed to that and.
It's been a fair amount of conversation about the need for community feedback as well. And so a work session generally has some opportunity for community feedback, but would you imagine a work session that would have a broader or more robust period of time for community feedback from?
Yeah, I think if we added it in so that.
Like two and a half hours instead of two or something like that?
Or three hours, to get that, for people to be able to, we still have to figure out a way to get the individuals who receive services from the organization to make sure that they are heard. But we can, I definitely, that'll be a priority of mine throughout the entire process.
And I know I brought up really early in the work group, that, you know, I had met with the CNE just by happenstance at the beginning of that for another reason, and at that time just approached that we were looking at this, and I think they've offered themselves, and they have again, and writing it as a resource, just to help us reach out to not just our nonprofit stakeholders, but, you know, the clients of those, they, through their networks. And so I just think that that's a resource that we should continue taking advantage of.
Certainly, the work group would be at the work session.
Right. And I'm just saying also, just as we look at community engagement, beyond just that work session, let's start to think about what are ways that we can leverage an organization such as that, that can help us get that broader feedback.
And I would also say that there's gonna need to be some assistance for council to reach decision on what to do next. Because we're gonna be given a lot of information, a lot of input, we're gonna need to be facilitated ourselves to come to a decision point, because we do need to come up with the structure and the process to review and evaluate the ABRT process.
It could be really nice to have facilitator there, because this is such a big topic that.
And then someone who's trained in the content understands this, it's very complex.
It's a good idea.
Would you also anticipate having language to discuss at that work session that combines the two efforts? There's been a fair amount of conversation about combining with the work group's remaining work to define structure, plus a priority commission and a new resolution? Or would that be tabled in favor of doing the work session for information gathering only? I'm just clarifying what the work product is for staff.
Yes, I think just, you know, like with the second chance to, you know, Home to Hope, if this is where staff could, you all have been doing this for a long time, so maybe, you know, staff having the conversation about what would be the best, you know, you know, practice. I think without, you know, if, what the working group has done so far is just to present that this is based on, you know, having individuals who work at nonprofits, run nonprofits, economists at UVA, you know, like people just participate, you know, in some of the services that we've been definitely talking about, having the biggest impact. If that is what, what we have come up with thus far, if that is the contribution to, you know, that we make at this point, then that, I'm sure that, you know, you have a very invested group of people who've been meeting four, you know, plus hours every meeting. So I'm sure that they will continue to stay if we open up a, you know, board and commission, if some of them choose to apply. You know, it's the same, but since the, since there's a lot of discussion around who this group is, how they were selected and, you know, appointed, and that group is not the most important factor here either, the most important factor is that we set up the best process possible. So if we need to remove that group to make sure that that happens in the way that it has been appointed, then we can just take the information that we have come up with so far for, from that group and just have that as a part of the presentation that council and the community receives during the work session. And I think that's best.
So just so I understand, so it sounds like we have the work session, staff will be listening, watching, writing, we'll have the input from the work group, we'll have the suggestions from the work group, the types of folks that should be weighing in. They have the stakeholders themselves and the nonprofit community, some of the speakers tonight would be extremely valuable. And then from there, we would get what staff's sense of a best practice kind of process moving forward would be, to, to carry on the work of, of an evaluation and review and reform of the ABRT.
And the only thing that I would do. And the only thing that I do would like to definitely make sure that we discuss is what does a comprehensive needs assessment, like what is needed for us to make sure that we have that data coming at intervals, whatever that looks like, because the research that I tried to do since the last meeting about, you know, really what this, that keeps coming up, and so it hasn't been done, so I would like to eliminate that from being a conversation of future council members and staff.
And this would bring up, this might be, need to be resourced in a different way, probably.
Two questions for clarification. What is the when in council's mind for this work session?
So is February?
Given that we're heading in a budget session.
My wife said no more work sessions, but.
Yeah. So do mine.
We could do it tomorrow, like a good Friday.
Let's do it during, we do it during, during the day, during the day of the morning.
So, I, I do wanna just see, you know, when you're thinking about for this work session, and whether it is soon, like February soon. And part of the reason is, I hear this, you know, let's, let's extend the time and have that session be the place where the feedback is happening, and I would just offer as alternative that, you know, maybe we spend our time in February and March gathering feedback from nonprofits and people who receive services from them, and you get past budget, you have the work session in April, and then we can really give you the feedback from people in a, in a different form, as opposed to, if you hear it in the moment, are you gonna digest that and then do your best work determining about whether to turn left or right? I, I don't know, but I think maybe we set the stage by asking staff to go get the work done on soliciting feedback.
And that's why I raised the resources that I did, because I think that that's a valuable step, I, I pause at the extra month that would take to do that, but I, I agree with that perspective, that getting it in that format could be more objective.
I think, and I would just add, I think it's really important, we are not getting feedback on defend your case that you would make in the ABRT process for the, for the value of, of you, the dollars that you apply for, or that you get. I, we're having a discussion about reform. If there should be changes to the way that the city gives, what should they be? Like, we, we could go till the cows come home about the, the very moving, important cases that all these partner agencies make for their, for receiving their funds, because they have to do that anyway. This is, this is a conversation about reform ideas, and, and what, because they, they can come and do that in other ways.
Exactly, and here's, here's my thought, right, about why? Because, you know, earlier in the evening, you had twenty nonprofit EDs or senior staff in here, and if I'm one of them, then I can fill your council room, whatever work session you have, with my particular constituency.
Right.
And so why not have us do the work outside of a meeting setting, and then synthesize what we hear, as opposed to it being an exercise for, you know, any individual nonprofit, who I won't pick on any of them, because we fund over forty, to find twenty of their recipients to come and give you that message? Why, why not have us do that work outside the meeting?
But then we still have a work session in the spring.
Absolutely.
But we will be informed with all this information.
I just can't conceive of doing that any more quickly, and getting, and getting drilled down to people who are recipients, and there's the very real matter of you all will perhaps be engaging in an interview process in the month of February, and we are gonna keep you really busy with night meetings in March.
Because of the budget?
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
So, so next month, can we at least have an update about the proposed process then?
So come, I'm sorry, come to the February meeting and say, here's who we're reaching out to, here's the questions we're asking, et cetera.
Because again, these questions have been asked, I think we're, you know, it's probably gonna be the same questions that we've asked in the past, and then especially the comprehensive needs assessment. I'm really interested in the update on what that would look like with the funding, who could do it, and, you know, how do we make sure that we schedule those regularly so that we can, we have this data that we are, that we, that, you know, that we need to, to make sure that we're doing this right.
I think we can certainly provide that, I would just say, you know, in the past, you know, that has been anywhere from thirty to forty thousand dollars, it's involved, you know, kind of the meta-analysis of all the reports that are out there in the world with the data in them, and then in addition, going out and getting, you know, focus group information and some other inputs other than reports that we already have.
And I would think you need some direction on whether or not the work group is gonna continue meeting on this, is that?
Well, we have a meeting scheduled, I think, tomorrow, but after, yeah, Thursday. But, yeah, we, I'm not sure what, I mean, even outside of a council approval, I could still have an advisory group submit something on, on their own, but, I mean, the point is just to get this right, and so, I mean, I don't, I don't think that, you know, we would, could, you know, continue meeting, it's a lot of time, and again, people are, that have committed to that, they are very busy, and they have lives too, so we wouldn't have them, have them meeting without purpose. Okay.
So is that clear?
I'm still not.
It'd sound like to me that you're entering a new phase of your work, and you really wanna do some way in which you formally thank them for their service, and let them know when there is a process by which they can apply to the next group. I hear you correctly, Madam Mayor.
Huh?
You're not intending to meet with those folks any longer, but you will invite them to be a part of the next group.
No, I intend to meet with them, because I think it's of value, I don't know if, you know, I wanna talk to the group about what they think about, you know, this process. I mean, this is a group that I, I put together, Council Hill has been a participant, but, you know, she didn't select the individuals, you know, either, but I, I don't think that they would continue, there's no reason for them to continue to meet at this level, you know, of, you know, where we are now. And there are staff members who spend, you know, a significant amount of their time, two staff members, three actually, because Matthew is a part, has been meeting with us too, so we'll just, I'm gonna think about that tonight, and I will, you know, there's, you know, Sally Hudson is on there, she's currently running a campaign, so I'm sure she doesn't have four hours just to, you know, give away, so we will, you know, just have a.
I just wanna underscore though, Mayor Walker, that, that, the group's kind of articulation of the need to build capacity and provide seed money and resources to get new nonprofits up and running, that's always been kind of this idea floating around, and you and your work group finally gave it some legs. So this is really important to underscore, I don't wanna lose that, I want it in addition to. And I think the, the community's been getting a sense that it was an either-or thing, so I, I just wanna at least let you know that I think that was extremely valuable, to have that finally articulated in a, in a more concrete way, because it was something that, I know Ms. Dimick and I were in a, in some public meeting at one point, where that was supposedly the duty of any philanthropy, was to build capacity among its nonprofit agents, and that we weren't doing that. People were just learning how to play a game, and, and color by number. So this is really important, what, what's been done, and, and, but I think we all are agree, we're ready for the next step to get it done right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna have a fifteen minute break.
Could we just have a, by consensus of council, the item is deferred.
Deferred, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarity.
No, pull that.
That's right.
Oh, sorry.[1198.66]
You were there on something today. Sure, it knows. How are you doing?
Yep.
Red wine. Organic wine for three ninety-nine a buck chuck.
All right, I call this meeting back to order.
Three buck chuck.
Thank you. We have the lease terms for the Al Marshalsville Historical Society at two hundred Second Street Northeast.
Evening Mayor, Council.
Evening.
I'm Paul Oberdorfer, Public Works Director, and tonight I was going to provide a little bit of background on the lease, the McIntyre Building. The building is originally was constructed for use as a city library by Paul Goodlow McIntyre. And in nineteen ninety-three, the Historical Society, along with the city, used a combination of donated funds and a loan from the city to do some pretty extensive restoration of the building. And from nineteen ninety-three, the Historical Society had been leasing the property. On September eighteenth of last year, Council agreed to extend the lease for a year, provided the Historical Society met ten Council goals. As time went on, that did not happen. The Historical Society came back again in March of, I'm sorry, in April second of twenty eighteen. And I'm back here tonight to provide an update. As of today, the Historical Society has completed nine of the ten Council goals as they outlined in their December twenty eighteen Historical Society report. The one that they have not met was the audit and audit of twenty seventeen financials. And I believe that was because they did not have financial controls in place at the time. And so they had requested a audit of the twenty eighteen financials instead. And so we're putting together the terms and conditions of the lease along with the city attorney. The lease will expire on April thirtieth of this year, so we're just getting out ahead of it. Provide the update, and also tonight we have some of the members from the society here to field any questions you may have.
So, thank you, Mr. Oberdorfer. I would just add that we've had some good productive discussions with the Historical Society and some of their board members. And, you know, I think that the key questions for tonight are for Council to inform staff if you'll entertain another lease. That's why we're here, a full quarter before the lease expires. If so, for what length of time? And I think that you had some amount of email traffic from folks about one particular item that is in the lease. And that is whether your intent last year was to continue to have three members that the Council appoints on this board. And information for staff about whether to include that or not in the lease tonight is important, I believe, going forward. Why it's in there from staff now is wasn't clear to me what the intent from Council was at the time, or whether you think that, you know, a reform board for a nine-month period is sufficient evidence that you're satisfied that it doesn't need to continue going forward. As to the tenth and last item that is yet to be satisfied, I would say that it does come with a staff recommendation that it is much more appropriate to get an audit on a year where they had financial practices in place than to hold them to the two thousand seventeen audit. That doesn't make any sense. And there is some precedent. You've done that in your allocation with the bridge over this last year or two.
So, open up for discussion.
I just have a question of Mr. Murphy. So, you said that the staff was looking for the length of term of the lease, but in item one, the term, there is a term identified.
Yeah, absolutely. And you will recall that I gave you all some materials that Mr. Barefoot provided. It was in your mailbox, a rather thick document where the cover letter requested a ten-year term. The initial staff recommendation was a three-year lease with the possibility of two one-year renewals. But we need Council feedback about whether that term is sufficient or too long or just right. You tell us.
And so the feedback that I gave for these three points was, I mean, the feedback that we got from the board appointees from Council, I'm definitely open to that conversation. I think, you know, one year, only looking at it after one year. But it's not something that I feel strongly about whether we appoint a third, third or not. And the, you know, twenty eighteen audit, definitely. The ten-year or three-year lease, I do have some, you know, concerns about locking into that, especially with, again, hiring a new city manager and for them to be able to, you know, review any and all contracts and that. And the fewer that, you know, we can lock them into, I am, you know, definitely pushing, pushing for that. So, it would be my hope that we would approve the contract for another year and then revisit this with new leadership.
I don't personally have any objections to that. I think Mayor Walker's point in regards to not locking in the new city manager is well taken. I can also say, though, I've been rather pleased, very pleased with the work that Mr. Barefoot and the board has been doing. So, I'm open. But I do think Mayor Walker's suggestion is a very sensible one. And to be honest, I don't envision Mr. Barefoot or the current board that we have changing or swaying in any way. So essentially, it's just, and for those who can't see, I'm basically talking to Mr. Barefoot. For those who are watching, I mean, essentially, Mr. Barefoot, it would just be another year. What you guys continue going and then we move forward and after the new city manager comes in. Okay, yeah, no?
I'd be curious of what implications that would have on the organization. Are we able to ask them to?
Can we ask questions of the board, of the director?
I'm sure we can.
What is the implications of that?
Or did the?
Of going from a three-year lease to one year.
We're really good. We're fine with a three years with the options to renew one-year, two-one-year renewals. The most immediate ramification would be we have nearly, close to twenty-three thousand dollars on the table from the Perry Foundation that we desperately need yesterday. They're offering that money, but they want to, they will only give it to us if we can get a five-year lease from the city. And so I think that was, well.
Three plus four plus one.
Three plus two-one-year renewals would be fine. That's still, that's a partnership with the city that recognizes our good faith effort to turn this around as quick as possible, plus the long partnership we've had with the City of Charlottesville, beginning in the late eighties, to take care of this building and move in as good stewards. And also recognizing that, you know, we've been here as an organization since nineteen forty, working with the city, the county, and the university very closely. So we would lose that money. We would, if you said tonight, we're only going to give you a year and then we'll look at it again, we would lose that money. And there's, I, it would really help us. I can tell you, I've been doing my very, very best to get some money into our budget and open us up to do some new and exciting things. And we applied for this grant back in the fall with the Perry Foundation. And they were willing to help us with a lot of key things that will improve the building as well. I mean, this is not money for programming. This is money for lighting. This is money for shelving. This is money for new exhibits, so we can improve the quality of the free exhibits that we offer this community. And that money, again, is on the table if we can get what is in the draft proposed lease tonight.
Madam Mayor, could I ask Mr. Barefoot? Given the points made by the mayor and other councilors tonight, what if it was a one-year lease with four possible one-year renewals? And that way, it would give the city manager, the new city manager, some, the ability to look at the contract. But if he or she thought to continue this, they, there would be the option for four one-year renewals. Would that, you know, looking at the grant funding, it says, at least the letter, it talks about five years. It seemed like you're okay with three, one and one. Would it be okay if you had one, 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 one?
No. I just think, just in terms of a measure of equity with the other organizations that rent buildings from the city, and in conversation with Mr. Murphy, it's, three years is pretty standard. And it's also standard to offer the possibility of renewals. That's why we landed on that number is, hey, we rent, the city rents buildings for three years. That's a typical lease period. So, that's where we started there. And that, again, based on the fact that we, as an organization, with the input from the city over the last year and a half, we feel very confident and proud that we've turned this organization around, and we deserve this lease. We've worked really hard for this. As an organization, everybody involved, not just me, very committed to keeping in mind that we would be here very soon, in early twenty nineteen, to stand before you and say, look at the report, look what we've been doing. We're really proud of the work we've been doing, and we believe that we deserve this. We've exercised good faith, and we've been around in the city for a long, long time. And, yeah, we had a dark period, like a lot of nonprofits, like a lot of organizations, like a lot of cities and counties. You go through a rough patch, but we very quickly got out of it, and we're proud of that.
Yeah, I would, I would just, this is not a question, you, Mr. Barefoot, but I, you know, we just had a discussion. I mean, when, when all the indicators are pointing in the right direction, after a lot of demonstrative work, including a lot of, I mean, they were under a really heavy, having ten conditions was pretty intense. I mean, and so I don't, to respond to that or award it with, with, with like a half measure that was highly contingent, it doesn't just seem to me to send the right signal. I mean, a one-year, it just would put you all in a continuing state of contingency. And that just doesn't seem like a good outcome. I mean, it would just be like that, you want to have some kind of predictability. And anyway, that's where I, that's where I, and I'm for lifting the Council appointment. I think that was part of the whole package of contingencies, and it was a pretty heavy, I mean, and it required a lot of upheaval there. I mean, you guys really had to overhaul the whole thing. And I think you did a great job with the board appointments and with, you know, so it's been a lot of change over there. That doesn't mean that I think that there should be a continuing dialogue with Council, which I, which you all will have to do. And if you don't serve the community, then you guys are going to face balance sheet problems because nobody will, you won't be getting grants. You won't be getting donations, and visitors won't be coming there. So there's still stuff that you will have to do to stay viable as outward-facing. But I would, you know, I would favor the full request as we can do it in our law.
And I should add that the Perry is, the Perry offer is, is a bit of a symptom of a larger manifestation, of a larger issue here because I've had many conversations with people who say, you know, I'd like to give you money. I'd like to help you. I'd like to support you. I'm going to wait to see if you have the full support of the City of Charlottesville. And you, and they feel good about keeping you in a building that you've been good stewards of since beginning, really, in the late eighties. And so I've had a lot of folks tell me, you know, I could give you some money, but I'm going to wait. I'm going to see what the city does and see how well they demonstrate their support of you staying as one of their partners in a community building.
And for me, it's not about the, you know, I understand, you know, the turning the organization around, but for me, it's just looking at the use of the space, whether that's the best space. but for me, it's just looking at the use of the space, whether that's the best space, you know, the dollar amount that, you know, you all pay versus what is lost, nine thousand a year versus over a hundred and five thousand, the proximity to the city, city hall, and whether, you know, we have capacity issues here now, whether that it could be another use. And again, I think someone with a fresh lens evaluating that, that is, you know, whether we want to negotiate a different space, I don't know. But, you know, just having someone come in and say that is mine and has nothing to do with, you know, what you all have done over the past.
I can tell you, since I've been a volunteer there in grad school, beginning in the early nineties, you should be very proud of your decision as a city to use this public resource in this way. This is a terrific organization. We do a lot of amazing work for this community. We're going to continue to do more. We're very proud to be there. So if you're questioning and saying, pause, is this a good use of our public resources and this building? It's a fantastic use of your public resources.
And I just would like for a fresh perspective on that. That's all I'm asking for. But if, you know, we, whatever, the other councilors, I mean, that's, that's why my vote will go based on whatever they decide. It sounds like you are, or it's going in the direction that you, you want it to go. But that's my pause.
Thank you.
And Mayor Walker and colleagues, it doesn't appear that the, the clause of with two one-year renewals is in the current lease. We have it for three-year lease term, but the, but the idea of having with, with two one-year options for renewal needs to be added. And so I would, I'm not sure if we're ready for motion yet, but that needs to be added.
Yeah, this is just a discussion.
A lease has to be advertised in a particular way. And so this is really to just get the, the feedback on the elements from you all tonight so that we craft it in a way where you can approve it at a future meeting.
So then just, for your information, Mr. Blair, I would, I would like to add that clause to item one, so that it's a three-year lease with two one-year renewals. And then I do want to delete section five G, which is the idea of the city council appointing a third of the board. That is deleted. And thank you very much. You've done an amazing turnaround job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And your board for coming tonight. Totally appreciate your work as well.
Thank you very much. We're looking forward to the.
Did your board chair want to say something? You mentioned that.
Hi.
Yeah, come on.
Hi.
Hi.
Mayor Walker and councilors, for those that don't know me, my name is Dr. Shelley Murphy. I don't know if we're related. Just want to let you know.
And you're a genealogy professor.
Absolutely. I'll find out. But I've been proud to serve as the chair of this Board of Directors for the Abbeville Charlottesville Historical Society. And again, we're a five oh one three C that was founded in nineteen forty. We're guided by the understanding that history's not the past. History's the collection of the stories, you know, and things that we tell about the past. And whoever gets to tell that story is who gets up, puts up the statutes and who doesn't. This will shape the history that we leave for those who come after us. We believe that everyone has a unique and powerful story to share and we should all have the opportunity to help make that history. Our responsibility is not to give voice, but to listen. The past is full of the good, the bad, and the ugly, and we should learn from it and we should learn together as a community. Our work's grounded on the belief in the worth and dignity of every human being. We respect people, communities, and culture. We believe in the potential for the history to enrich our lives, to create stronger relationships in more vibrant, diverse, and inclusive communities. So we're committed to using history as a tool to help create these experiences that can inform, enlighten, inspire, and bring people together, offering opportunities for new relationships and new understandings. So our goal is to be and to continue being a strong civic organization that works to enrich, enrich the lives of our neighbors and the visitors here in central Virginia. We've been tenants at the historical McIntyre Library on Second Street since nineteen ninety-four. We've raised significant funds from throughout the community to pay for the much-needed, you know, rehab that needed to be done. And we've got the new board in place. Nearly half of them are African-American and a new executive director, who you know very well, who's done an impressive work to quickly turn our organization around and put us on the right track for the future. And I believe and support that we're going that way. We now offer an all-new suite of programs, projects, exhibits, tours, classes, and much more to come. Our public events are entirely free and open to everyone. So our staff enjoys the full support and confidence of our board. We're looking forward to continuing our partnership with the city and we're excited about this new chapter in our history. And I want to personally thank city council, city staff, and everyone in the community for the support because there's more to come. So if you have any other questions, just let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And visit our website. It's totally revamped. Okay.
Hold it up.
You did? Isn't it beautiful?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, boy.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
There's more board members there.
I, I don't mind if any board members want to.
There's three back there.
Well, I'm not going to take a lot of time. It's late. But I'll just say, I'm Phyllis Leffler. I'm one of the city-appointed members. I don't have prepared remarks, but I just want to say that I have really been amazed by the work that's been done this last year. It's been totally, totally impressive to me in terms of the way that, well, first of all, I should say that I served on the board of the Historical Society in the nineties. So I'm very familiar with the work of the society. And I also know that there was a really, really rough period. And the fact that Koi Barefoot and the board has been able to, in an incredibly short period of time, develop the documents that we need to go forward, work with the Center for Nonprofit Excellence, create a whole new set of bylaws, develop a code of ethics. I mean, it's all in the packet that was given you. But that's in addition to all of the programs that have been developed over the years, over this past year. The programs are incredibly diverse and really very well-attended. So I just, I just want to say that I couldn't imagine more productive work being done in this period of time. So I've been really pleased to, to be witness to that. Thank you for the opportunity to serve on this board.
All right, thank you. In terms of Mr. Murphy, do you have all the, all that you need?
I think we're ready. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right. Any other business?
Can we pull the item out?
Oh.
This shouldn't be long.
So item in from the consent agenda, modifying definition of dwelling units, second of two readings was pulled and.
Madam Mayor, I think it was pulled and I'll, I'll let Ms. Galvin sort of go over her presentation and rationale. But I think it was pulled because Ms. Long, as she stated during the consent agenda comments, has asked that while the council may enact this proposed change to the zoning ordinance, she is asking that a specific property located at five one three and zero Rugby Road be exempt. And I will turn it over, I think, to Ms. Galvin at this point.
Well, thank you, Mr. Blair, and, and thank you, Mayor Walker. I would just like to ask or move that we adopt the ordinance as presented to us with regards to the dwelling unit clarification with the one addition under item two in that ordinance that would be one statement that says the provisions of the zoning text amendment shall not apply to site plan P eighteen dash zero two zero three dash five one three and zero Rugby. So I guess I need a second on that.
I'll second.
Sure, I second.
And, okay, so my, my rationale for that, for that addition is that I did find the applicant's argument compelling, especially when I looked over the fact that they'd been working through, the project team had been working on the project for eighteen months. They had gotten the final B R approval of the fraternity house and they had submitted a site plan. So that, to me, suggests that they have, I'm not sure if you could formally call it a vested right. I'm not sure what the exact detail is, but they've, they've invested a lot of time and effort. And that I, as part of being fair, I, I feel we should make that particular piece an exemption.
And I had a question that I had asked staff, just the impact that this building will have on the surrounding, you know, neighborhood. So is there an impact, like staff concern?
Well, with any new, new building or any sort of new structure, there'll be some sort of impact. It'll definitely be a, a different situation than there currently is there. But they, in this case, they would have the ability to have an additional unit on the site, which would allow for the number of units that they're requesting as part of their site plan. So that's, that's a tough question to, to answer since, you know, in any change is going to have some sort of impact.
Do we foresee like a major issue with parking?
We're, we're not, not sure how that's going to work right now. The site plan is currently in review and we've only received some of the review comments back. So there's still quite a ways to go in the review process, so it's really hard to know.
But all of that, I mean, it'll still be under the same review process and have the same requirements that it needs to meet. So when staff give feedback, it's like any other time that they go through this process. So regardless of how we decide here, if we decide to, to kind of allow them to continue forward, there's still going to be, there'll be some scrutiny that then they have to adhere to based on what the city staff comes back with.
They'll still be reviewed based on the code.
And Ms. Greasy, conceptually, though, they have proposed, as Ms. Long stated in previous meeting, that they're supposed to supply parking underneath the structure. Is that correct?
There, there is a proposal for that.
So is that mandatory or will it, like, could it become optional?
Well, they have to have, meet their parking requirement. And it's a, choosing to have such an addition to the site will require that they put it underground somehow because the new building will take up a significant amount of the site.
Okay.
And I just want Mr. Blair to clarify for the council that this proposed amendment would really be for the site plan as submitted. If there was some significant change to the site plan, that it would no longer satisfy what has been proposed. Is that correct?
Well, I, I think it's based on the site plan that's been submitted, which will go through a comment process and then it will go to a final site plan process. Is that?
The preliminary will continue through its process and then it would move on to final if, if eligible.
I would assume that changes to the site plan that are, that are driven by our own codes and staff's feedback would be, fall within this.
Right. But should, should they decide to submit a new plan or go with a different developer and those things?
Then it falls under the code that we're changing. Okay.
And, and right now, we don't have the full scoping of what comments are there. And so, you know, there could be concerns down the road.
All right. Great. Thank you. Any further discussion or clarifying question?
No, for me, it really is about the process and the timeline, so.
All right. So please vote. So that carries five to zero. All right. Is, are there any other, other business? All right. So now we're going to open the second matters by the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
I gave you all a chance. It's Nancy Carpenter. Looking at the discussions, two discussions that came through tonight, one on the Home to Hope Initiative with the peer-to-peer network and the conversation around the needed reform to the A B R T process. Couple of observations. Yeah, the A B R T process needs to be reworked. And if you're not in direct services, you really don't have an idea of what needs to be done. You know, people on boards are great. They lend a lot of opportunity to nonprofits. But if you're not in direct service, it really is important about how are we delivering services to the, to the person, to the client and whatever. And I think that that is a process that I do remember in two thousand and eleven conversation about, you know, revamping that process and it's time now to do it. I'm not saying that nonprofits don't do a good job. Six hundred of them, I'm sure a high percentage of them do do, you know, a good job. But I think it's time as, as a taxpayer that I make sure that the nonprofits, because, well, there are a lot of nonprofits that do duplicate effort throughout the city. And to be perfectly honest, you know, you were talking about Councilor Hill, some of these nonprofits getting all squeaky about, oh, I didn't know the. I'm a nobody. I mean, I'm just a citizen of the city. And I remember, you know, last spring, there being a talk about keeping the funding levels the same because there was talk about reforming the A B R T process a year ago. So if someone's running a nonprofit and they don't pay attention to where their money comes from and how it might be impacted, they come to a meeting and want to say, oh, it's only been two weeks. It's like, no, it's been a year. Pay attention. That's what they need to do. And with the peer-to-peer network navigation, I heard more questioning of that and the A B R T review than I heard being questioned about the New Hill development. I'm not saying New Hill is not needed. I'm just saying that there wasn't much concern about the equity fund, you know. There wasn't much, you know, questioning of that program as the peer-to-peer network. And I just don't know why. I mean, that, that program will definitely make, hopefully make the lives of people who sometimes are at the bottom rung of our income levels because they're trying to reestablish themselves and make them better. I mean, I'm sitting back there, I'm sorry, y'all sound, that was white supremacy conversation. I, I have to call it out. It made me very uncomfortable to hear you all talking. And it did come across as, well, this is maybe why Charlottesville was targeted. You know, it was, it was very, very disconcerting, you know. And I know you've got to be stewards of, of, of the budgets and things like that, but it just came across as pushing back in a way that was not, the way that was not justifiable. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Elliot Brown. I'm a city of Charlottesville. I'm all for changes with the, with the funding priority systems. I think that the same old things aren't working. We see some really, we see no progress in, in the areas of low income, racial equity, any of the marginalized communities being served in a real way that's moving them. It's a Band-Aid right now. It needs to start changing in a bigger way. And I'm an executive director of a nonprofit. I think that, and I see that my organization, as well as most of my colleagues that were speaking tonight or that aren't speaking, that would be, that will probably be at the work session, are the same white people, upper to middle white, white-class people that have been running and creating nonprofits since the beginning and going into marginalized communities and telling them what they need and telling them what the solution is. And there is no way that I know that. And it has been, it's so awesome to hear you say, let's get people that are, we're being. we're being served, to tell us the impact, what we need, the solutions." That's refreshing and it doesn't happen anywhere. And this is, again, one of the, I've said it many times, we're in a place in Charlottesville right now where we could be a leader in this whole progress. And Mike, something you said earlier really made me sad, it was saying that you hire out, the city focuses on hiring out contract people so you don't have to pay them the living wage benefits and all whatnot to, so they can survive and be supportive as a, you didn't say living wage, but you said, so you don't have to give them a benefit package.
No, I just, well, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just think that you have different scales of benefit packages at different organizations and cities, it's just different what they are obligated, what they can do, that's all that I meant.
Okay, well, it didn't, it sounded like you said you do it so you could avoid paying the benefits package. I kind of think that's what you said.
I apologize, I didn't mean that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, made in a turn, good night.